Hi, I'm Jeremy Crosby.
And I'm Nick Boucher. We're your hosts for the program that's all about your city, Talking Pittsburgh.
Every weekday, we pull together the news, events, and information you need to stay on top of what's happening in the city of Pittsburgh.
Find Talking Pittsburgh on cable TV, Roku, Amazon Fire, Apple TV, and our live stream on the web. Plus, you can find all our headlines and stories on Facebook, YouTube, and our video on-demand service. This is your city.
Keep up with Talking Pittsburgh and the issues affecting you and your neighbors.
Want to know what's happening in your city? Get notify me messages from the city of Pittsburgh. Visit fitchburgwi.gov on your computer or mobile device and select the big notify me button on the left. Enter your email and/or phone number, whichever is best for you to get notifications. Scroll down the list and select all the topics you're interested in to receive email or text messages about. You'll be notified every time one of your topics is updated. Sign up for notify me. One more way to keep up with your Pittsburgh government.
Good evening, everyone, to the Pittsburgh Common Council meeting for August 12, 2025. The first needs to call to the order to the meeting at 6:32. Please stand up for the place of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So next, we move to roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Ratafratta.
Here.
Alder Dancer Jr.
Here.
Alder Gerhert.
Here.
Alder Herps.
Here.
Alder Jetzer.
Here.
Alder Ladasey.
Here.
Alder Maldonado.
Here.
Alder Reagstad.
Here.
Alder Vafadari is absent with excuse. You have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you. So next, we are moving to public appearances for novel agenda items, and we have two items. One first is the mayor proclamation. We are honoring the retirement of our K-9 Drago. So we're going to start with the proclamation.
Proclamation honoring the retirement of K-9 Drago. Whereas in 2017, following his selection as the Pittsburgh Police Department's K-9 officer, Sergeant John Parker chose K-9 Drago as his partner, and?
Whereas together Sergeant Parker and K-9 Drago carry forward the strong foundation of the Pittsburgh K-9 unit, ushering in a new era defined by professionalism, innovation, and a steadfast commitment to service and safety, and?
Whereas Sergeant Parker's dedication, skill, and leadership as K-9 Drago's handler were instrumental in the team's success, and his commitment to the K-9 program has left a lasting impact on the department and the community, and?
Whereas K-9 Drago was hand-selected for his exceptional workability and outstanding social temperament, qualities that would define a career of remarkable achievement and impact, and?
Whereas during his years of service, K-9 Drago conducted more than 600 deployments in both patrol and detection, contributing to over 300 arrests, including multiple high-risk apprehensions involving armed and dangerous suspects, and?
Whereas K-9 Drago's countless successful detections led to the seizure of illegal narcotics, dangerous weapons, currency and drug paraphernalia, enhancing public safety and supporting law enforcement operations across the region, and?
Whereas K-9 Drago and Sergeant Parker were recognized by the Wisconsin Law Enforcement K-9 Handler Association with several distinguished honors, including Rookie K-9 Team and the Year Meritorious K-9 Apprehension of the Year, Meritorious K-9 Narcotics Fine of the Year, and K-9 Team of the Year, and?
Whereas beyond his accomplishments in the field, K-9 Drago became a beloved ambassador in the Pittsburgh community, participating in hundreds of community events, school visits, and department programs, and becoming a cherished figure through traditions such as his annual Halloween costumes, and?
Whereas K-9 Drago formed a meaningful bond with Emma Murchens, a brave young girl who loved dogs and proudly served as an ambassador for the Emma Loves Dogs Foundation, spreading a message of compassion and kindness, and?
Whereas K-9 Drago helped modernize police K-9 operations by co-founding the Madison Area K-9s, M-A-K-9, training program and becoming one of the first K-9s in the region to fully integrate with a special response team, enhancing tactical safety and capabilities, and?
K-9 Drago services saved lives, strengthened community trust, and set a new standard for excellence within the Pittsburgh Police Department's K-9 program.
Now, therefore, it proclaims that I, Julia Ratafratta, Mayor of the city of Pittsburgh, along with the common council, do hereby recognize and honor K-9 Drago upon his retirement and extend our deepest gratitude to both K-9 Drago and his handlers, Sergeant Parker, for their outstanding service and wearing dedication and lasting impact in our community. So this is proclaimed today, August 12, 2025. So we have a plaque for you, Jonathan. But first, I want to say something that I am saying. I want to thank you and your entire family because, you know, it's a family affair to take care of the dog. So I want to say thank you for all your services and, you know, also to your family. We're going to take a picture. Okay, so next, we are moving to item 4B. It's a public hearing for, I want to open the public hearing for the council-proposed amendment to the 2026 to 2035 Capital Improvement Plan, known as CIP. So we have a couple of people that they are registered to speak. And we are going to start with Patrick Cheney. He is in support, I don't know what, and, oh, support amendment number five and seven. Okay, Patrick, you have three minutes.
Vote to amend and then support amendments five and seven. Delay sewer and water mains on Irish Lane. As this stands, this current version does not have the support to pass, even though this is exactly what residents want. Amend to delay both to 2035 so it is kept on the CIP list and can be reevaluated, readjusted in 2026. Council has in mind to get some 2026 grant for road improvements, so hold off to see if this grant is approved. This current CIP list has some six proposals, all rolled into one massive project, all in 2029. Repaving Irish Lane is long overdue, needed now, sooner. This is not an amendment, but it can be one next year. Other infrastructure proposals are not needed now or near future, not wanted, as clearly stated in all resident meetings. Residents have stated preferences for all area development held off and instead have a better practical future plan. Sine roads, mile-and-a-half water main, gained two customers and still does not serve the greenfield water main system. Wasteful spending, questionable timing, don't repeat this kind of planning. Water and sewer mains promote development interests and not wanted by residents. There are no developer interests now or coming or any property for sale. This new sewer main is a dead-ended, unconnected, inactive pipe for future use, so wait for that future use. The water main replaces a 10-inch main with a 12-inch main, an example of faulty forecasting. Don't repeat this. All better left to distant future of developer investments paying for their own infrastructure, not by residents paying. Widening Irish Lane by 2029 plan would require property acquisition, ditches moved back, heritage oak tree removal, and more for wider traffic lanes and bike lanes on both sides, and maybe go super wide with our, for a multi-use head path. Better planning is repaving Irish with the simplest possible resurfacing layer added, sufficient for 10, 15, 20 years, or until development occurs, who can then pay for it all. This needs creative thinking. Use the 2026 grant to pave Irish from cane to fish hatchery. Rethink cane to sine. Vote to delay water and sewer mains and bike lanes to a future year when needed, allowing West Irish to be repaved sooner than 2029 while eliminating a full year of pre-construction engineering work. Rework the plans for the east part of Irish. Work towards a solution agreeable to your constituents who want a paved Irish lane without water and sewer mains. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. And now I am calling Rita Henricks.
I'm Rita Henricks, a 20-year resident. Please vote no on the leaf vacuumed truck and support Alder Herps amendments to cut the teen center and downsize the bike path in South Dale. Within the last year, Pittsburgh residents told you that they couldn't afford a referendum, that you should stay within your budget, just like many Pittsburgh residents struggle to do. You came back and levied a regressive tax on all. You didn't care if they drove expensive cars or one that was 15, 20 years old. You didn't care if they needed to take their cars to get their kids to school or to their doctor or to get to a job because there isn't bus service available to them. Now it seems like you tell us that bike paths and street vacuums are more important than the real needs, like police service. You forget that you are here to represent all of Pittsburgh, not only those who agree with you. You say you care about people, but you seem to forget that those on fixed incomes, seniors struggling to pay property taxes, those who struggle without being seen. You need to show that you will do the hard work to protect everyone physically, as well as financially. You claim to have listening sessions, but you don't seem to listen. Pittsburgh must provide needs rather than wants. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Okay, anyone else want to speak regarding the CIP? Oh, we have another one. Thank you, Tony. Okay, so I am calling Tony Hartman.
Is this the right one? Okay. Thanks, Julia. Yeah, I want to speak basically in favor of most of these and against the first one, against reduction of number two of the, of the South Dale bike path, and so in favor of most bike stuff. I wish there was a great amendment on here for Whalen Road, but maybe next time. For number three, the bike lanes and road shoulders on Larson Road, I'm in favor of that. I'm in favor of what I would call a road shoulder. It's also a breakdown lane. A lot of people want to make it just a biking thing, but it's not. It's for everyone's safety. Definitely in favor of adding parking at Quarry Ridge. That area is a draw for us. It brings tourism and tax dollars into the city. Also, number 10 and number 12. And the back truck seemed like a heck of a good idea because heck, everybody else around here does that, and it's just downright good environmentalism. And that's it, guys. Thanks.
Okay, that's it. Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, I am closing the public hearings. So next, we are moving to the consent agenda.
I move approval.
Second.
All those in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
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 And you pose? Oh, yeah, we have one. You need to pull 17.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'd like to pull item 17 off the consent agenda.
Okay, all those in favor of the consent agenda except number 17, say aye.
Aye.
And you pose, the motion carries. Okay, what is about the 17?
That needs to go to Housing Advisory Committee.
Okay.
Mayor, I'd like to move to refer ordinance 2025-017 with the addition of the Housing Advisory Committee.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of referring ordinance 2025-017 to the Housing Advisory Committee, say aye.
Aye.
And you pose, the motion carries.
Mayor, I have a amendment or a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to move several items to right now on the agenda.
Okay.
Those are items 10A1, which is about our K-9 here in the chambers, 10A3, Chicory Meadows Park, and 8P1, which is about the Community Equity Committee, in that order, to now on the agenda.
Okay, so all those in?
Second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of moving all this resolution up to the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
And you pose, the motion carries. Okay, so, so the first one is Resolution R-131-25. Who's going to read that? Finance.
Let me just find it. Yeah, I'll move approval of Resolution R-131-25, approving Sergeant Jonathan Parker's purchase of K-9 Drago.
Second.
Okay, so what is this?
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward. It's part of our, our plan that our K-9s, when they retire, are allowed to be purchased by their handlers. So we are approving the purchase of $1 so that K-9 can go live with his family.
Okay, yes. Yeah.
Yeah, if you guys want to, if you want to say anything, feel free.
Do you want to say something?
Or your family, yeah.
Yeah.
Come on up.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Sergeant, Sergeant Parker, would you like a receipt for that dollar?
I think it's not appropriate.
Okay, we'll get one issued tomorrow.
Okay. Well, geez, that's loud. Well, first of all, I just wanted to tell you that the thing that happened here is that long ago, when I first got Drago, I promised my son, Jace here, he's a good kid, that when Drago retires, that he's going to be his dog. So he gets a own Drago from now on. That includes picking up all the filth and letting him out every day and feeding him, right? I just wanted to say thank you to the community. I think that, well, I, many of you may not know, but the K-9 program in Pittsburgh is completely community-funded. And so the reason for our success and all the things that you heard about K-9 Drago first started with the community and the community supporting the police department. And we really appreciate it as police officers, and we know that the community here in Pittsburgh supports us. And trust me, we, as the police department, and me as being a sergeant, knowing this, we go out there every single day to protect you, to serve you, and to draw you closer into what we do as police officers. So I'm a big advocate, along with Chief Morales in community policing. And the first thing that starts is that relationship. And that's the one thing that Drago did extremely well during his career is building a relationship with the community and the police department. That's why we call him the ambassador to the police department. And a kind of a small story is that early on in Drago's career, we came up with this term, Drago's pack. So obviously, dogs are pack animals, and I think it's very fitting for K-9 to incorporate his entire community into his pack. And that goes into just meeting you, greeting you, being social with you. And then, on the other flip side, is protecting you every single day. And you may have not heard a lot about what Drago did on the streets, and that's okay, because you not necessarily hear a lot of the stuff that we do as police officers in the street, but it's a good thing because we're out there quietly serving you, protecting you every single day, every single night, and myself, as well as all my colleagues in Drago, bravely serving this community. So again, thank you to the community. Thank you for always supporting us. And we got a new K-9 coming, so if you want to come out, please come out to Community Night Out. That's tomorrow, I think, was it five to, five to seven, five to eight?
Right away.
Yep, five to eight. You get to meet the new police K-9, who's going to take over the reins from Drago. So thank you.
No, thank you very much. Oh, okay. All those in favor of accepting Resolution R-131-25, say aye.
Aye.
And you pose, the motion carries. So the dog is yours, so congratulations. No, thank you very much.
And thank you for not paying in pennies.
Okay, which one is the one?
I think the next one is the Chicory Meadows, and I'll go ahead and make the motion as well. I'll move approval of Resolution R-138-25, authorizing acceptance of Chicory Meadows Park bid as amended by Finance.
Second.
Did the Board of Public Works approve?
Public Works and Parks approved amended.
Okay. Did the Park Commission approve?
Park Commission approved.
Finance? Finance approved, same as the Parks Commission amendment and added the language about changing the transfer so that it's enough money to cover the changed bid. Because to clarify, this, this would be the bid, the higher-level bid that includes the basketball court, the tennis court, and the two pickleball courts. So more funds need to be transferred.
Okay, so I have a couple people that want to, they wish to speak in support of this. I will call Lisa Fruch, Michael Fruch, and then on deck, John Clay.
Hi there, I'm Lisa. I've been a Pittsburgh resident for 23 years, living in Harlan Hills, and I'm glad you guys approved it. Those parks are in total disrepair, and it's very sad. All the kids in the neighborhood who go to three different public school systems, it's a place for them to all meet and mingle. So I really appreciate you guys passing that. They are a big hazard now, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. We've lived there for, you know, well over 20 years, and I think this is the first time that there's been any attention really put into getting those courts fixed.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you. John Clay? Oh, okay, you're in support. Okay, 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 thank you. Anything else? I don't know, you, Dave, you?
The sense of urgency on this, you know, there was discussion, should we delay this to try to group it with the Swan Creek resurfacing? You know, the city brought that up as an option for us, and we considered it, but as the mayor, I believe astutely, pointed out, there's no guarantee it'd be a lower price next year with things, and we feel like the neighborhood has waited for this long enough. And the option, you know, we see the popularity of the pickleball, and we think this is the best of all worlds, that, you know, they essentially get the same, the same area back, but they have two pickleball courts and one tennis. So I realize it is more money. Fortunately, we have some funds from our, from our interest. The Finance has agreed to transfer, to pay for it. So that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think it's great to add the, I wasn't, I didn't, until I saw this resolution, I didn't realize we were considering pickleball courts. But from what I've read, pickleball is so popular that they, when there's pickleball lines on tennis courts, sometimes they're only used for pickleball. So I think it's great to have both facilities available so that both tennis players and pickleball players can enjoy that facility.
Any other comment, question? No? Okay, so we need two-thirds of the vote because it's an amendment to the budget.
Do you mind if I just clarify that they'll be voting to add $60,000 in the third to the last, our whereas clause there? So it would be a total transfer of $130,000 that you would be approving here.
Okay. Any other question, comment? Yes.
I'll just add, I believe it's 700 or seven, the number of, either 700 or 900 homes are served, you know, are in the neighborhood of this, this park that would use it. So it's not a, you know, Alder Jetzer pointed out, well, these are big lots, yes, but there's still a lot of, there's a lot of homes and a lot of people that will be using, using this.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that I'm clear. So the, what we're, what we are proposing and voting on tonight is resurfacing the existing basketball court, and there's a tennis court, or is there, there's two tennis courts now. And then we'd be getting rid of one tennis court and replacing it with two pickleball courts. Am I correct in that? Okay. I just was, want to make sure I watched the Parks Commission meeting, and it was hard to follow the, the different alternatives and options. I just wanted to make sure I'm crystal clear on that. And I did want to have, I did have one other question. Does the amendment or the, the version that we're looking at now include, there were some comments at Parks Commission about lowering the height of some of the fences around, I believe it's the pickleball courts, because pickleballs don't bounce as high, so there's not a need for like a 10-foot fence. I can't remember who on Parks Commission brought that up, but I remember thinking that was a pretty astute comment as well to help keep that cost down.
I think we'll work with the, with the contractor on that. I know one of the considerations with pickleball that we learned through the McGaw pickleball courts is that there needs to be some screening for wind because the pickleballs are more affected by wind than tennis balls. So I can't say that it, it may not make perfect sense to reduce the height of that fence in order for us to provide the screening that might be necessary. So, but we can look at that. Thank you.
Ah, yes.
Someone else wants to, they just have one more thing.
We heard often that a current council can't compel a future council to do something. Discussion, all right, we're going to do repairing this basketball court. There's another one in the park. And we, Parks Commission was like, all right, we don't need to, you know, that one. And similar thing, previous council, when we spent $1 million to redo McGaw Park, the mayor and?
The tennis court.
The tennis court, McGaw, McGaw tennis courts. And we spent $1 million on that project. And the thought at the time, you know, the mayor at the time said, all right, that's our, that's our tennis courts for the area. And, you know, the other ones really don't matter too much. Obviously, that neighborhoods want their own facilities, so that's been a shift. So like I say, we, we often hear, you can't compel future councils.
We do it all the time.
Well, we can't, and we can't tell them what to do in the future. You know, this is what we want. You have no control over what they're going to do in the future. That's all.
Thank you. Okay, so everyone is ready? So we need two-thirds of the vote. Okay, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Dancer Jr.
Aye.
Alder Gerhert.
Aye.
Alder Herps.
Aye.
Alder Jetzer.
Aye.
Alder Ladasey.
Aye.
Alder Maldonado.
Aye.
Alder Reagstad.
Aye.
Alder Vafadari is absent. Motion carries.
Okay, so the motion carries, so, okay. Thank you for coming, for your support.
Gabriella, did you want me to do this one?
Okay, so where we are now on?
Equity Committee.
Oh, okay, okay.
Um, yes, so I am bringing forth ordinance 2025-016, establishing a community equity advisory committee by creating a Chapter 6, Article V, Division 7, Section 6-558 of the Pittsburgh Code ordinances for this committee.
Finance approved.
Second.
Okay, okay, it was approved in Finance, okay. Okay, so how we going to do that? Sarah, I know that you have a presentation first.
Yeah, Julia.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, we'll do that.
Is the entire committee here this evening? Okay. Almost. All right. Okay, almost. All right.
You ready?
You can't see it. I've got it plugged in. Maybe it's this other one. Got it?
All right, so I'll be kind of kicking this off as a, sorry, I have my back to you all. As a project spearheaded by the mayor and also myself and members of council and then all of these great individuals who have spent over a year working on this committee, getting it to a place where now it can be brought before the council to be voted on, to be established in the city. So this Community Equity Advisory Committee was established in 2024 by Mayor Rada Frata to provide guidance and recommendations on matters that create more equitable outcomes and foster community in the city of Pittsburgh. From approximately July 24 through, from July 2024 through 25, this committee operated as an ad hoc committee. And you've heard updates from myself about this committee at council meetings around us establishing a mission, establishing a vision, and a value statement while learning from our neighboring communities and providing feedback on our city plans. The charter outlines the committee's purpose, their structured responsibility and governance as it transitions to a permanent advisory body for the city of Pittsburgh should the vote go and have enough votes for that this evening. So I would, there are some individuals who are no longer here on this that have started with this committee. Individuals have transitioned, moved on to other municipalities to take jobs and other opportunities. So I did want to give them a heartfelt thanks for all of the hard work and dedication that they put into this committee. There are some members of this committee currently who weren't able to join us today. I believe we're only missing Dana, Dana Pelaban. She's one of our newer members. She wasn't able to join us tonight, but Dana has been in the trenches with this group, laboring over this work and providing her feedback and expertise to this committee. And then I will let folks who are up here introduce themselves as we go down. And each member of the committee will be able to provide some, a piece of this presentation for you all. So you're not just hearing from me the whole time, because I know y'all probably try to hear from me all the time. So I figured the folks who have been laboring over this work and who have dedicated their time and resources to this should be able to address you all, and I will turn it over to them.
Here in the CEC for helping be part of the committee. I work in the investment finance space and happy to be here.
Hi, Christopher Pagaro. I've been on board with CEC for the entirety. I'll just briefly say, I'm incredibly proud of the work that we've done, and this committee is phenomenal. And I think the hard work that we are presenting today, if anything, it has really helped me feel a connection to all of Pittsburgh and much closer that, you know, we can see the benefits of this work for all, all in our community. So I'm really proud of our work.
I'm Wendy Hathaway. I've lived in Pittsburgh for just about 15 years now, and I live in the Corey Hill neighborhood. I've been on the committee since the beginning as well, and it's really been an honor to work with all of these folks and all the folks who were previously on the committee as well. Just a lot of people with a lot of really great experience and stories and a lot of great ideas.
Hi, my name is Sarahi Garcia. I've been on the committee almost since it started. I'm from District 4. I've just been really happy to be a part of this committee and provide the youth perspective that I was brought in to.
And you know me, I'm Sarah Olson, staff contact, and I'm just happy to be here and support this team.
I'm Ari, and I have also been on this committee since the beginning. I'm really proud of the work that we have done in building community within our group and also really getting an understanding of where Pittsburgh has the opportunity to grow and benefit from the work that we're doing here.
Hello, I'm Bill Gillespie. I've been in Pittsburgh for about three years now. Retired here to this wonderful community, really enjoying it so far. It was always my dream to move to this area when I retired, and I did it. So here I am. And it's great. It's been, it's been really, really inspirational. The committee itself has been fabulous. I have been in education for a number of years, educational leadership specifically. And so it was, it was really a pleasure for me to come onto this committee and watch the younger people, younger than me, obviously, and be able to see how wonderful they are and how inspirational, and also how dedicated they are to wanting to make this community better. Community equity work is really phenomenal, and I've been involved a lot with social justice committees and a lot of other areas that are similar. But it's been really, really a pleasure and a fun year. We really enjoyed our year together, talking about a lot of different things. We didn't always agree. That's okay, right? But it was a good, it was a good, good mesh of people. So thank you.
Hello, my name is Janice Hughes, and I'm a 28-year resident of Pittsburgh. I've been with this committee since day one. And I have to say that this committee, the fact that the city is even considering this speaks volumes to the growth of Pittsburgh. And I'm really honored to be a part of this.
Okay, so I'm your data hub expert for today's presentation, but I'll try to keep it really short, I promise. So Pittsburgh has really been evolving for generations, nearly 200 years since its beginning. We're currently one of the fastest-growing cities in Dane County. You've all heard the statistics, population has surged in the past decade, and more growth is on its way. Pittsburgh is also becoming more diverse in a ton of different ways, culture, language, age, education, background, you name it. But with that kind of growth comes challenges. Some are new, some are decades old. Homeownership rates are below county, state, and national averages, with race and income driving the largest gaps. We struggle to engage with renters, which means leaving out a lot of voices out of planning and decision-making. 10% of our residents live in rural areas, which has their own challenges, such as transportation, access to services can be limited. Income and poverty rates vary quite widely across our city, with some Pittsburgh neighborhoods facing the highest food insecurity rates in our entire county. About 1 in 10 residents lives with a disability, and 1 in 10 older adults has difficulty living independently. That was a lot of stats to rattle off in under a minute. But what matters more, and what you'll be hearing next, is about the people who are really behind the numbers and how we can work together to include everyone as we shape our city's future.
So when we first came together, one of the first things that we did was a gap analysis or a SWOT analysis. And, you know, some of the statistics that you just heard, we came to realize and understand. But we wanted to go also into a visioning process to understand what our equity team could bring with it. So this is our vision of a more equitable Pittsburgh. And I'll read it verbatim, just to be very specific. So in an equitable Pittsburgh, our city is a place where every resident thrives. It's a vision built on responsive services, inclusive participation, and a deep sense of belonging for all. And I want to reiterate the word "for all," all residents. And we recognize that if we build this, if we have this future that we envision, that as everyone is able to thrive, we are collectively better and stronger for it. So what does that mean? We envision an empowered and valued residents. So all residents feel supported, valued, and empowered, with city services and infrastructure responsive to the needs of diverse communities, ensuring access for everyone. We also envision accessible public transit. Public transit includes well-maintained benches and shelters at all bus stops, regardless of location, ensuring comfortable and equitable access for daily commutes. We also envision inclusive community engagement. So community engagement that is multilingual, with interpretation and translation as standard practice, ensuring youth and elders alike participate in decision-making processes. We also envision equity in policy and in programs. So city staff apply an equity framework to every policy and program, developing initiatives in housing, public safety, recreation, and environment with input from all communities. So ultimately, again, this is increasing access to all communities, recognizing that some communities currently do not have access to input.
So we put a lot of thought into how many meetings we should have and, you know, what kind of people we really need to get onto this committee. And so we have some recommendations that were then put into this resolution, which we completely support. And that is, as far as the composition and meeting schedule, we would have six residents from the city and one alderperson. And we would meet eight to 10, eight to 10 times per year. And this, you know, fits within certain, you know, budget requirements. But it also gives a lot of opportunity to discuss really important topics. We wanted to have enough people on the team in order to provide a lot of diverse perspectives, but also have the right numbers that it's not everybody talking, you know, for a long time. So we also talked in detail about powers, duties, and responsibilities. You'll hear more about that from Bill later on. But we'll be an advisory committee, essentially providing recommendations at the behest of the mayor and council. We definitely want to make sure that our meetings are publicly accessible. I want to make sure that all of our meetings are open and free to all of the public to be able to see and understand exactly what we're talking about. And all of the procedural guidelines will follow all of the other, you know, City of Pittsburgh member handbook and commission, you know, duties and responsibilities and procedures. So just operating like a standard committee.
And so this is our mission, vision, and values. The Community Equity Committee wants to serve as a formalized advisory board, working in partnership with the mayor and the city council, and of course, the city departments, ensuring that Pittsburgh's governance promotes an inclusive community. We would like to recognize the terms like diversity, equity, and inclusion. And we know that these have been understood or politicized. But at their core, these values reflect a commitment to compassion and fairness. And Community Equity Committee builds upon civil rights legacy, striving to unify our community around the principles that everyone deserves, which are dignity and opportunity. So our mission is through collaboration, education, and advocacy, we take action to confront injustice and transform equitable systems, ensuring all residents, staff, and visitors feel heard, valued, and empowered. Our vision, we envision Pittsburgh as a thriving and just community, rooted in solidarity where diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility foster an environment of safety, well-being, belonging, and access for all. And for our values, we're focused on justice and equity. We act with urgency and allyship to drive lasting change, advocating for accountability and transparency. We foster inclusion by celebrating diversity and amplifying silenced voices. Guided by empathy and respect, we welcome constructive dialogue, but not harassment. And we cultivate belonging and trust through meaningful connections, empowering residents to contribute. And we prioritize accessibility and growth, building a culture that promotes well-being for all.
Okay, so next we have the advisory functions and guidance part of our presentation. We'll start with planning, review, and feedback. Basically, we're saying then that the review and provide feed, we will, excuse me, we will review and provide feedback on the city's strategic plan, communication plan, and various other comprehensive plans, those including parks, open off, open space, housing, biking, pedestrian access, and recreation. Policy programs, recommendations, and all of these now are at the request of the mayor or you, the council. So we would review and make recommendations on city policies and programs to ensure that they promote equity and reflect the diverse needs of our community. We would also identify ways to improve outreach and engagement, particularly with historically underrepresented or underserved communities. And finally, we would recommend tools, frameworks, and/or best practices to advance equity and inclusion within the city.
I made you guys pass the headphone on the way for me to just use this. So we have some scope limitations and comparative analysis, like any good product or notion that you're looking forward. It's good to see what your peers are doing, which is what we did in the space. But this, we're not going to be a political advisory group, advocacy group. We'll not function as a political advocacy group or gauge an electoral campaigning. And this is going to be more advisory, not enforcement. So it's always good to have that kind of relationship with the city. But yeah, so like I said, we looked at what our kind of peers were doing in the space. They kind of set that benchmark. So we looked at Sun Prairie, Village of Oregon, Oregon, Manona, and Wanakee. And they're doing lots of things, like Sun Prairie is doing an organizational equity audit in their city. And they also had a paid, have a paid communications and diversity strategist. And I think they also have been, they've also had an ad hoc steering committee since 2015. Village of Oregon has a, has a DEI committee since, I think, since 2024. And Sun Prairie has also had some allocating funds to some youth projects as well. Manona has a long-term DEIB implementation plan, and Wanakee has embedded DI work with the city departments. And I think they've also partnered with UW-Madison in their DEI work as well. So we're not coming into this space completely alien. This is already being done around us, not just in Dane County, of course, around the country and around the world. So that's some of the local comparisons that we did. And that's all for the presentation. Thank you very much. Muchas gracias. Any questions that you guys might have for the board, we're happy to take at this point.
Before you all jump into questions, colleagues, I just want to say, I mean, this presentation was short, but I just wanted to say how proud and grati, and express my extreme gratitude for having these individuals let me lead this work for like the second half. I didn't start as the chair. And we did have some very courageous conversations at times. So I just appreciate everyone bringing their whole selves to these meetings, not shying away from difficult discussions because sometimes those things had to be had, and we had to talk about some tough topics. So I appreciate everyone always being respectful, even in those manners where sometimes we didn't always agree. So it was just an honor to serve in this capacity, and I just want to thank you all for the hard work moving forward. And that's why I definitely wanted to highlight and put these individuals in front of you all, colleagues, to show that, you know, while there was a council person and then a city person on the, or a city staff member on this council is the group and the community members that who live and are embedded in Pittsburgh that really did the work for this community that is standing before you today.
Thank you, Donna. And also I want to say thank you very much, you know, when we put together this committee a year ago. You have been meeting like twice a month, and sometime many hours. So I want to say thank you for all your, and, you know, you're very passionate about this topic. You care, and I think this is a great presentation and a great final product, you know, with this ordinance. And I want to say thank you very much for the bottom of my heart, I think you, you know, for all your time serving, for caring about this community, for making this community more inclusive and welcoming. So I want to say thank you very much. Muchas gracias.
I want to thank you all as well. One of the things I noticed going through the presentation is that the language is very intentional. And I noticed like every single word was placed in a way that I think reflects the conversations that you all have had over the past year. So I just want to point that out because language is incredibly important, especially now. I had a couple of questions, and you all may not be able to answer all of them. Maybe the mayor may be able to chime in, as well as council may have feedback. The first question I had is about kind of, I saw something about incorporating the voice of seniors and young people. It's more of a suggestion than anything or an idea. I'm more than willing to help contribute that. You know, I know you have an excellent ally in Janice by the work that she's doing on the Committee of Aging Well, getting in front of our seniors. But also I know that, you know, Sarah and her team have brought young people to But also, I know that, you know, Sarah and her team have brought young people to, to the city for Youth Government Day, for other things like that. We've got a lot of resources in this community where you have incredibly engaged young people who weigh in. We have access to those young people, and I would definitely recommend, you know, as the committee gets into its rhythm, to be able to utilize those networks. So that's more of a statement than a question. The second question that I had is, maybe the mayor may be able to chime in, since you've created it, but what is the barometer for what kinds of topics or things come in front of the Equity Committee versus what doesn't, right? Because there's a, every, this work embeds every single thing that we do. But obviously, you know, meeting eight times a year, you'll have to be selective in what you take on. So are there things that are prioritized a little bit higher than others?
I think there, there is an slide that where they have an idea, some of the topics that they are gonna, it's gonna be referred out to this committee.
So Joe, like I would say, from, from what we discussed, it would look like more of the like larger plans and things that we have, instead of like more like localized, like specific things, or we're targeting on where, like if we have these types of, this type of work embedded in the overall structure, then hopefully the trickle-down effect from starting at that umbrella thing. So for example, like reviewing kind of the comprehensive plans or the strategic plan and things that we have in the city, that that framework that's embedded into this group that we've outlined at that would then trickle down to the rest of the work and like hit the different facets of those overall larger umbrellas.
I'll add, I think most people are sick of me talking about the City of Seattle, where I come from. But having worked at the City of Seattle, doing equity work, I envision that it will evolve. And I think the, the group will recommend tools and how you all will engage with equity work as well on individual levels and also city staff. So I think as we think about a program that is, that's beyond just the committee, it is an ask that everyone get engaged with it and understand the principles and dive deeper into that work. So we're not, I think, one thing that I've said in this group is that municipal governments and councils, I'm on the school board for Verona Area School District, we're often complaint-based systems. So those folks who have access or resources already oftentimes have access to us as elected officials. So the trick is really, how do we get folks who don't have that access to be in front of us to understand how our public policies can benefit all folks? Because, you know, my lived experience is one thing, but it doesn't include so many other, other experiences. So we want to make sure that public policy is showing up for everyone and that we're uplifting all folks within those policies.
Thank you. My last suggestion, and this isn't exclusively for this committee, I know we've talked about it with committee the whole as well, but maybe rotating meetings to different parts of the community other than City Hall, so that, you know, it can be, you know, publicly like noticed that it's in our different neighborhoods, particularly our HNI neighborhoods. It would be cool to be able to have Equity Committee meetings there, you know, where folks can walk over and say hi.
Can we, Joe, Alder Maldonado, can we do that, like when they have to be on, like the fact TV?
Yeah, you will need to be on TV now.
Yeah, yeah, we just need to get fact TV there.
They could just go, okay, cool.
Thanks to the committee for this presentation. It's great. I've been excited to see what would come out of the ad hoc committee. So this is, it's really nice to see something that's so well thought out. I also, I think something I've learned being on council for so long is that having lots of perspectives is important, because not everyone asks all the right questions. No single person can ask every question that needs to be asked about a certain situation. We all have come from our own perspectives, and so having all these people up on the dais, people bring different things to the table, they come up with different things. But the committees play into that as well. I have committees that have, have brought up an issue that just never occurred to me before, you know? It just happens all the time. And so this work doesn't fit perfectly within any committee. I feel like HNI, that have Healthy Neighborhood Initiative Committee, sometimes tries to like wade into this, but that's not really under the purview of the committee. So I feel like this does feel, fill a niche in the city that's needed. We do have a lot of challenges with properly, I mean, the thing that comes to mind, obviously there's lots of things, but the thing that comes to mind most is just the difficulty with communicating to diverse audiences is a huge issue with the city. Part of that is just staff capacity and a lack of somebody with that focus. But I think having a committee that's, that's thinking in this way can only help us, and I think it'll challenge us to be better, because sometimes doing those things and being equitable and making sure diverse voices are heard, it's not an easy thing to do. And, but I think that those questions and those, those points need to be made. So I support this and excited to see where this goes.
Thank you. Anyone?
I will keep it short, because I think my colleagues have done a great job of summarizing most of my, most of my comments. One thing I did want to especially point out and thank you for with your work, kind of getting this going, is the challenge of building something that doesn't exist currently. I mean, you've got, as Emmanuel, as you mentioned, there, there are other communities that have done this, we're not the first. But as somebody who served on a committee before being on council, it can be overwhelming just to go once a month when there's a well-established structure and clear guidelines. When you have to build, you know, build this as you are starting it, it is so difficult. And I'd want to, you know, especially recognize that. And I think the presentation you, you shared with us this evening clearly lays out the need and the opportunities that we have. I guess my one concern, and this is not something for you all, I guess it's more of a, I'm vocalizing this as kind of a challenge to ourselves, is I don't want, if we create this Equity Committee, that all of this work falls on your shoulders. I think it's incumbent on all of us to, you know, to not just say, look at this and give us your stamp of approval. I want to make sure that we're all working on this work together and keeping these things in mind throughout all of our committees, throughout all of our different departments here at City Hall. And I know that many of you are on other committees, which, you know, again, thank you for serving on multiple committees and helping build this while also continuing your work there. But I guess that's kind of my one, my one concern and my one challenge is I don't want all the work to fall on you. I want, I want to make sure that we're all working together. And certainly if I'm not, I want you to hold me accountable and, you know, however I can be of service, let me know. I'm excited to, to see the work that you will do in, in your, in your future.
Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, I just want to thank everyone, same as everyone else here. Thank you all for coming, and thank you for the presentation. I think this work, I guess communities like ours doing this work is more important now than it probably even was when you just started this ad hoc community. So thank you for, for doing this. And then just a short comment, I really appreciate you in your presentation calling out just rural communities in general. Those are the communities I represent a lot of. And we're pretty unique in having such a large rural population, and they experience things like poverty and housing insecurity and food insecurity as well, and they experience it in similar but also very different ways. So just calling that out, I appreciate, and just, yeah, thank you guys again.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just wanted to say a quick thank you to Sarah and her Employee Research Group, because I know that, that that Employee Research Group's been doing great work for the city for a long time and pushing things internally in the city in ways that, that very few people see, or really nobody outside of the city government sees. So, and I know that's an important context leading up to this, to this. So thanks to you and for all the, the city, what is the ERG called? Okay, Diverse Equity Inclusion Employee Research Group. Yeah, they do great work. So thanks for, for leading that into, thanks to all the, all the city staff there.
Yeah, I forgot to mention Sarah, but you, you have put a lot of power in this committee and, you know, and you believe in the goals and the vision, so I want to thank.
I do. I feel lucky to be surrounded by this team. They're amazing, so it's an honor.
Okay, any, any other person? So we are gonna vote, so we already have the, you know, we move it, isn't it? Okay, so I will do roll call. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Dancer Jr.
Aye.
Alder Gerhert.
Aye.
Alder Herps.
Aye.
Alder Jetser.
Aye.
Alder Ladasey.
Aye.
Alder Maldonado.
Aye.
Alder Reigstad.
Aye.
Professor Darius Absinthe, motion carried.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations, you are officially. So the next step, it will be you need to, for the six, you know, resident, they will need to apply, like, you know, using our mayor, what is, application. Yeah, thank you. Okay, so where we are now?
Back to the top.
Administrators. Administrators report. Our consent agenda? No, administrators report.
Oh, administration report, okay. No, that's it.
Ready for me, Mayor? All right, good evening, everyone. I'll start off with some events. It was previously mentioned earlier this evening, but I want to remind folks that the Police Community Night Out will be held tomorrow night at McKee Farms Park from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. The Agora Art Fair down just a block or so here from City Hall on East Shore Parkway is taking place on Saturday. The last concerts at McKee for the season is taking place, obviously, at McKee Farms Park on Monday evening, the 18th. I want to remind the common council that the housing survey has been extended to August 22nd. I believe you've got it in an email, and there's awesome information on the city's website. I would encourage you, if you haven't taken that survey, to do so and share that with those constituents within your districts as well, so that we can increase the numbers of, of survey participants there. I also want to remind Alders that you received an email from our new associate planner, Dan Houk, I believe is how you pronounce his last name. And if I've not done a very good job at that, I, my apologies to Dan. But he sent an email to you all indicating that it is the time, the second period this year for minor comprehensive plan amendments. So if you have any projects that are needing a minor comprehensive plan amendment, that window is available until noon on September 15th. If you have any questions about that process, please reach out to Dan or Deanna in planning and zoning. Alder Reigstad shared this information yesterday or last night, I believe it was. The city also received the same information, I just want to share it publicly, that the Department of Administration released its January 1, 2025, population estimates. And the City of Pittsburgh's population is estimated at 36,179 residents. As you know, we continue to grow at a rather crisp pace. I think the mayor mentioned to me today that we may not be in the, quite in the top 10 as a percentage any longer, but by sheer numbers, we're still certainly growing quite, quite quickly. The Country View Mobile Home Park, I just wanted to inform the common council that we've been doing some outreach at the park, namely communicating that raising of the nine units is going to take place now August 25th. That is new information. We were hoping that that would occur next week on, beginning the week of the 18th, but that has actually been pushed back a week, so that'll take place on the 25th. We're also conducting some survey information to get a better understanding of what the housing needs may be and/or housing resources that could be potentially available for residents. As we are informing them of the council's support demonstrated at the last meeting for city staff to consider additional enforcement and legal actions that unfortunately could lead to displacement of residents. And then finally, we're also reminding residents of the boil water notice that is still remaining in place there. Yeah, and, and in regards to trash collection, it had been collecting for several weeks based on non-payment of the trash collection services. That trash collection company has now removed that trash, but as a result of the non-payment, has also removed the trash bins. So we will continue to monitor the situation. We have already issued several citations and notified Public Health Madison Dane County of the ongoing situation, but we anticipate that it could be an ongoing problem in amongst the water quality and septic system issues that are periodically coming forth. Any questions on that before I move on to my last item?
Yeah, we have a question.
Sure.
Raising the dwellings, what do we do to ensure that the water, you know, that they get it shut off, that it doesn't damage the already fragile water system? And same with the, same with the sewage, that it's, those raisings aren't disrupting the other units?
Right, yeah. The expectation would be is that obviously both the septic and the water lines are identified before the, the raising takes place, and that those are expected to be capped, so that they should not have any negative impact on the rest of the system. And then, of course, once they're capped, the raising would take place as well. And then they would need to, to ensure that the cap remains after the raising occurred in case there might have been any sorts of damage there.
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely. Any other questions on the Mobile Home Park?
No?
We can chat afterwards if you have something to. And then finally, our finance director, Misty Dodge, mentioned this at the Finance Committee, our net new construction, as reported by the Department of Revenue, was 2.59%, which for any number of communities in our state would be looked at with great anticipation and excitement. And we view it quite positively as well here in the City of Pittsburgh. We are fortunate to have a lot of growth, and as we all know on common council, is the city can only levy additional funds in correlation to its net new construction. So effectively, state levy limits are requiring municipalities to grow if they, in order, in order to increase the amount in which they can levy. If you look at inflation over the last 12 months, that's trending at roughly 2.5 to 2.75%. So our net new construction is really likely only to keep pace with inflation and ideally allow the city to continue to provide the city, the services that it is already providing, but it is not likely to create a situation where additional staff, and therefore additional staff capacity can be added, or any new significant programs and initiatives without a corresponding reduction elsewhere. On a related matter, the DOR noted that our equalized value, which is the value of our properties, increased approximately 9%. And we talked about this at our department head meeting and, and wanted to ensure that our department heads are all on the same set of expectations. That 2.59% net new construction equates to an approximate $700,000 increase in the amount in which the city can levy. And if the city, through the common council's approval of the operating budget, provides a cost of living adjustment of, of up to 3% and maintains benefits at the same levels that they are currently at, that will cost approximately $725,000. So you can see where inflationary costs and the net new construction have a direct correlation in where we can make our adjustments in funding. We do believe that that gap is, can be overcome, and the mayor, again, I don't want to speak for you, Mayor, but you have indicated yours desire to maintain a cost of living adjustment and city benefits as a measure of employee retention, recognizing that capacity is limited in the city. And one of the best ways that we can try to continue to provide the services that we have is to retain the staff that we have versus having to hire new staff, train them, and get them up to proverbial speed. So what that does mean, and as we relate to our department heads, that the requests for additional staff are not likely to be honored, at least not extensively, if at all. And we also relate to city staff that the vehicle registration fee obviously will be applied as required to transportation-related expenses, and that the common council will determine what, if any, determine what, if any, current levy funding for transportation-related expenses will be reallocated elsewhere to things such as operating costs and a custodian for the new police services facility, an increase in transit service in the community, or any other potential reallocations. Anything you want to add on that, Mayor Doyle?
No, I think you mentioned, and also, did you mention about that, the increase in the health insurance that we get? Oh.
Yeah, the increase for health insurance that we have moving into 2026 is approximately 9%. So obviously, that is a considerable cost to the city, and that is a notable contributing factor as to why the overall cost to maintain benefits and provide a cost of living adjustment slightly outpaces the net new construction levy increase.
So as you know, we are going to go to the 2026 budget, you know, with a, you know, we don't have too much room to, for any additional expenses. It's maintaining the status quo, maintaining the current, you know, you know, we already have a very lean budget, and the extra capacity, my priority is to maintain the staff benefit and also to provide a COLA adjustment, you know, because it's fair, everything. We have an inflation of almost 3%, even 2% COLA adjustment, I think is the right thing to do to our staff. So this is where we are, so we'll see.
Any questions for me, Doyle? No? As always, if you do, feel free to reach out. Thank you.
Okay, so Mayor's report. So I want, first, I want to tell you that a couple of things about some great company that we have in the city, that they are having anniversary. First is Oak Bank. They're celebrating 25 years in the city. So as you know, Oak Bank is a community bank, that they also provide a lot of community, you know, investment, you know? They are always sponsoring event in the chamber, the concert, you know, through the police foundation, you know, so they're doing a lot of stuff. And the other one that I had the opportunity to assist last Saturday to the gala, Grace, is celebrated 25 years in the city. And, you know, they, last year, they provide assistance to more than 5,000 people. They are one of the best palliative and hospice center in the region, and we are lucky that they are here in Pittsburgh. And they have great plans for the future, an expansion is coming in 26. And so that one is great. So I want to mention to you that they also do supportive care, they do another program called H@Home, they have an adult daycare center, hospice, and grief support. So that one is, I want to share that because we have great company here in the city, and they're doing great things for our community. Also, General Beveridge is celebrating 80 years, too, so. So what else? I had the opportunity to participate in a lunch and learn last week, the senior center, and I think most of you are going next week, and be prepared because they are asking tough questions, okay? So it was great. And then the other thing I want to mention that I was, last week, I was able to participate in a mayor's summer conference in New Mexico with more than 100 mayor from around the country, and it was a great experience, learning what other mayors are doing in the community. And, you know, I always bring, go to see and bring other ideas and what is working and not working. But one thing that I want to mention, every community is suffering for a housing, lack of inventory, housing is kind of like number one. And the other topic is, that I was very surprised, is we talk about the climate change, about how many municipality are experiencing more than 100 degree in average, especially we think sometimes that those community are in the southwest area, part of the country, but their community experiencing that in Oregon, in other parts. So on how this high temperature are affecting municipality, the infrastructure, and also the health of the residents. So it was interesting. If you want to know more, I have all the booklet in PDF I can share with you. What else? I want to thank to Deanna in the planning department, because with everything that she's doing, she had time to put, she's moving forward, as you've seen, some of the miners changing to the zoning code. So I want to say thank you, Deanna, because she's, you know, working with the neighborhood plans and with all the recurring work in the planning department. So that one, I appreciate that, that she's moving forward these zoning changes in summer. I want to also thank you to Sergeant Logan Brown. He has been working for many months, putting together the, our community night out that is going to be tomorrow. I hope to see you, because it's another way to, you know, to see, to see the neighbors, your residents. A lot of people are coming to this event, and it's getting bigger by every year, so. What else? I also had the opportunity to meet with the executive director from the Red Cross, Chief Sarver and myself, we met with the executive director a couple of weeks ago. They came because they were, you know, they are, we have a partnership with you, I don't know that through the senior center, we do some blood, what is, what do you call it? Blood drive, blood drive? And it was, we did one like two, three weeks ago. So they are great to work with us, so they want, they came to say thank you and how we can continue partnership with them. Thank you, Scott. What else? Also, I had the opportunity last week to do, I am part of the housing cohort within county, and Brad is also part, and Lauren, and we went last week to do a tour of the Green Village in Madison. So they show us a development where they have different choices of homes and price choices, too. It was kind of like a Terravessa, but it's a more mature neighborhood, very impressive, you know what I mean? It was a wow. So it was great to do that tour, and how we ambition some of the new neighborhood plans, or neighborhood coming to Pittsburgh, I think we need to rethink how to incorporate choices, you know what I mean, from different type of homes and prices. And then finally, our next informational and listening session in District 1, I want to thank you, Alder Maldonado and Hefz, they're going to be also participating, it's going to be this Thursday, Redeemer Church, at 6 o'clock, 6 to 8. So I hope to see some of the neighbor from District 1. My Coffee with the Mayor is this coming Friday, too, at 9 o'clock, Tati Coffee in Terravessa. So I, you know, I love to do this, this session, and coffee with the mayor, and listen for neighbors, and I am, you know, the feedback, the good, the bad, and everything in the middle, so I am open to take it. What else? That's it. Any question for me? No? Okay. So next, we move to commission and committee report, and we go with Plan Commission.
We meet next week, Tuesday, at 6:30 PM.
Thank you. Board of Public Works?
Move approval of Resolution R-11325, rejection of 2025 Crescent Road Utility Improvement Bids.
Second.
Public Works approved.
Finance approved.
Okay, do you know why we are rejecting this?
We only had one bid, and it doesn't, we are, we have a delay with our stormwater, this is water and stormwater work, and we also have ARPA Street, and it needs to all be done at the same time, and it's not coordinated. And so we decided we bid this, bid this work for next spring or next year when we're going to do the streets. Bill, do you have anything else you wanted to add to that?
Yeah, just that the delay is due to the fact that we got a grant from the EPA, but the money, or the whole process was delayed to the point where the one contractor who did the bidding said that they would not be able to get everything done in time for us to have pavement done before, you know, our October 31st cutoff.
Okay. Any other question, comment? None? Okay, all those in favor of Resolution R-113-25, say aye.
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 Can you oppose the motion carried? Next one.
I move approval of Resolution R-12125, approving agreement for professional services for Pittsburgh City Hall renovation.
Second.
Public Works approved.
Finance approved.
Okay, thank you. What is this?
So it's kind of the planning for our renovation and selecting a firm to, you know, to do that visioning and that design, and there was a three-person committee, Adam, Paul Woodard, and Tracy, and we had three bids, and the one they, I will just point out, the one they selected, or the one they recommended in the Board of Public Works was not the lowest bid, but it was the one they looked at it and they felt the most comfortable with that firm, and they have worked with them before. And I would say if I, you know, having worked with Paul and Tracy for my entire, you know, most of my entire time, I believe their track record of making sound, sound decisions is well, well documented, even, even though we are not accepting the lowest, we're not going with the lowest bid on this one.
Okay. Chad, do you want to add anything else?
No, I think, well, I guess, just very briefly, I will add just that we're obviously looking forward to having the space needs in City Hall addressed. The building's over 25 years old at this point in time. There are a number of deferred maintenance things that we've been holding off on, like carpet replacement, in anticipation of a forthcoming remodel whenever the police department vacates its space, which obviously you'll see a referral went out tonight in regards to the police services facility project, so the dominoes will hopefully begin to fall here, and we'll be getting all of the city department's space needs addressed here over the next several years.
I would add, we asked, say, to revise the template they used for this agreement, they had engineering services, this is architectural services, and, call anything else, Bill, or something?
No, I was just going to ask, do we need, do we need to move an amended version of this to get that language change reflected in the agreement here?
You didn't change in Public Works?
We did in Public Works, because it's, the document says engineer, where it should say architect.
Oh, okay.
I'll take it as a friendly amendment.
Yeah.
Second. Sounds good.
Okay, so, so why we are changing the name from engineer?
Yeah.
Engineering to architect?
Yeah, we, we use, it was our standard engineering template that was used.
Okay, I get it now, yeah, yeah, yeah.
This is not a, it's not, you know, engineering, it's architectural project.
Okay, any other comments, question? So we don't, so it's a friendly amendment, so.
We don't need to vote, I don't think.
So all of the favor of the Resolution R-121-25 with a friendly amendment, say aye?
Aye.
Can you oppose the motion carried? Thank you. Park Commission?
Madam Mayor, just a couple of things from Public Works.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Our new wellhouse bids are being reviewed, and they started site work for the, for the tower.
Oh, yeah.
2025 street resurfacing, I expect it's maybe done, will be done this week. This was last week when we had the meeting, and the same with the ARPA road resurfacing, it should be done shortly. Chad, do you, any update?
Yeah, Tim relayed at our department head meeting that that work was complete with the exception of some, I think, like site restoration and sign removal and those sorts of things, and they've been working with the contractor to get that taken care of.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, can I make a motion to amend the agenda? I'm hoping to move from the Standing Committee Report's items 9C1 and 9C2 to next on the agenda. I know that we have a couple folks here that are eager to hear that, those items. That would be the intergovernmental agreement with Fitchroona EMS, and then the discussion on long-term emergency medical service in the city.
Yeah, the discussion, it will be postponed to a committee of the whole.
Yeah, wait, I can second it, I can postpone it when we get to the.
Okay, so, okay, we can do that, yeah. I need a motion.
A second.
Okay, so all those in favor of moving Resolution R-126-25 to up to the agenda, say aye?
Aye.
And you oppose the motion carried. So do you have anything else, Dave, from Public Works?
I do not.
No? Okay. So now, okay, before we go to Park Commission, so we are going to discuss, this is a public safety and human services, so Dave.
I'm going to turn it over to Donald, I was not at the meeting tonight.
Oh, okay.
So we are at, I move approval of Resolution R-126-25, updating the intergovernmental agreement with Fitchroona. Public safety and human services did approve.
Second. Finance approved.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I will let Chad to talk about this, because he has been involved since day one for more than a year, so, okay.
Thank you, Mayor. So as the mayor mentioned, we've been in conversation with the city of Verona and the town of Verona in regards to updating the Fitchroona EMS agreement. The administrators from those municipalities, as well as the chief elected official, specifically for Pittsburgh, the mayor, participated in the process to update this intergovernmental agreement. This came about over a year ago, when it was brought to the city of Pittsburgh's attention that for a number of years, our call for service volume of the overall Fitchroona EMS run volume exceeded the costs in which we were providing our financial contribution to the EMS district. Recognizing that that was problematic, we did engage in conversation and collaboration with the other two municipalities to review the entire intergovernmental agreement. And I'll point out the notable changes, the agreement itself is within the packet, and you can see all of the changes that were made. But ultimately, one of the primary things that was updated was the funding formula. The current agreement has a single funding formula factor, and that is the equalized value by municipality, and that is being changed to also include not only equalized value, but also call for service volume and population of each of the three municipalities. And that also is over a three-year period, so that kind of helps smooth out any, you know, excessively high or low situations in any given year, particularly on the run volume. The other thing that has changed that's notable is the composition of the EMS commission. Under the current agreement, each of the three participating municipalities appoints three commissioners to the, to the commission. Therefore, each of the three municipalities has basically an equal say in district operations and funding. The new agreement, or the updated agreement, the composition reduces the number of commissioners from nine to seven, and the city of Pittsburgh will have four commissioners, and the city of Verona will have two, and the town of Verona will have one. That was also done in an effort to better reflect the financial contributions to the district, and therefore the overall governance. There was language that was added and enhanced in regards to the termination and or withdrawal of a municipality in the district, and since we were looking at the entire IGA, or at least portions of the IGA, we looked at the entire IGA as well. So there are some other operational adjustments that have been made as well. Our funding for the new intergovernmental agreement will increase, obviously, to better reflect, again, our call for service volume district-wide, so our contribution will increase to nearly two-thirds. And I can provide you with some, some rough numbers here as we have it estimated currently. The city of Pittsburgh's contribution to the 2025 EMS budget was one, just over $1.2 million. And we do anticipate utilizing the levy limit adjustment strategy that we've used the last three years. For those of you that have been on common council, previous, we've taken the levy limit adjustment that the state statutes allow when CPI is higher than usual. It does allow for a 2% factor to be added on to that, which allows us to obviously increase our financial contribution to EMS through use of this strategy without a negative impact to our overall levy limit capacities. So if we, again, utilize that strategy, which we anticipate, our cost in 2026 is estimated to be. So if we, again, utilize that strategy, which we anticipate, our cost in 2026 is estimated to be just about $1.45 million. So you can see that overall increase will be about 200, just under $230,000 in total if we employ that strategy. Overall, Mayor, obviously if you have anything to add, feel free. But I would also just want to, before I wrap up my comments and take any questions, indicate that I personally felt that this process was very collaborative and went really smooth overall. I think all three municipalities came to the table with the best of intentions to update the current intergovernmental agreement to not only reflect the appropriate cost structure, but also take a look at the future and make adjustments in the IGA that may better reflect future EMS service as well. So feel free, Mayor, if you have anything to add, and then I can also take questions.
Yeah, so, you know, you said everything. So, but I want to say that I am very happy because I think this is a very fair agreement among the three municipalities. And also, I think, since we are contributing almost two-thirds of the, the, the funding, I think I, the composition of the, the committee is fair for the city of Fitchburg. It's also fair that the language, in case that any of the municipality decided to leave the district, is, we have a better understanding how to do it. It's based on equity. And it's gonna be, it's gonna be a simple process if someone want to leave the district than it was before. So for me, that will give me some peace, you know what I mean, about moving forward with this district. So, yeah, and I agree with Chad. We had, I don't know how many times we met, you know, well, a lot. But it was, it was great. It was very collaborative with the other municipalities and, and, you know, and we want to say thank you to Verona because they subsidized it for so many years. So, but it's, we knew that this, this time will come. We knew that, so. And I think this, as I say, this is a fair agreement for all of us, so. What else? Gabrielle and then Dave, okay.
Just want to thank city staff and the mayor for all the hard work you did on this. I've been hearing updates about this all along, and I think it's great that we did this. I love to hear that it was a great process. The city of Verona and town of Verona are such important neighbors to us, and we obviously work with them on many other issues aside from the EMS district. So I think it's great that we're able to make this happen. And I think the increase in costs obviously is better if we didn't, but it is fair. And also, I think the fact that the governance structure changed to reflect that, I think, makes a lot of sense. So it's a good plan. The district also has a lot of, very advantageous from a levy limit perspective. So I think it's, obviously the state is encouraging that kind of collaboration and innovation. And, and I think it's, we've done good with it, so I'm glad that we're updating the contract and making sure that it lives on to its next, next chapter.
Uh, Dave?
The formula, just looking at equalized valuation, for many years, it followed as both cities grew. And, but then disparity became the big investment of Epic, you know, and, and then also we've had higher calls due to memory care, some of those things. Epic is continuing to grow. I've been working down there on projects since 2011. There's a big one going on now, and I can't elaborate on other plans. But that investment of that will continue to skew, skew things. I don't know if is the formula now? We're just gonna look at call volume and readjust every year, Chad?
So we'll look at not only call volume, but population and, and equalized value. So there will be three factors that will be utilized, and then we'll use for all three of those factors, a three-year average, which will also help.
Thank you.
Any other question, comments? Okay, so we are ready to vote. All those in favor of Resolution R-126-25, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And you oppose the motion, Carissa? Thank you. Oh, Chief, do you want to say something? Huh? Cam, sorry. I couldn't see you because I have this camera here and then, you know, it's over now.
No, I really just came to answer any questions if anybody had from an operational point. But I will echo what, what has been said multiple times up here. From a, from a district side myself, I know from my employees as well, want to echo exactly what you said. We've, the, the review of the district comes up about every five years, just to make sure that it is a, is a good entity and a good process. To me, this process here has been the, the most inclusive, the most transparent. Engaging with me and my, my counterparts in public safety has been very much appreciated to make sure that you do have a good agreement and, and we are, we were involved in that process. So truly thank you to all the people who were involved.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Mayor?
Mayor, I'd like to move to postpone indefinitely the discussion on long-term emergency medical service in the city.
Okay.
Second. This will be, we'll cover this at the committee of the whole.
Okay. All those in favor of postponing these items, say aye?
Aye.
And you oppose the motion, Carissa? Do you know when you're gonna put in?
I think August.
Oh, okay. Okay. Thank you. Okay, so now we are coming back to item eight C is Park Commission.
Two, two things. Parks Commission, you know, we approved the, approved the plan for Chicory Meadows after, and we had a lot of discussion. It was, we spent the majority of the meeting. And then the second thing was the, we had discussion, you know, no, no action has been taken on the naming of the hub. But what is clear is we would like to remove Hub from that because Madison has one on Park. And so we, we hope everyone gets behind that. Several things, you know, were thrown out. Traceway Community Center, personally, I feel I'd like it named after the father of our city, Doug Morissette. Doug Morissette Traceway Community Center, but it won't be, it won't be the hub, I don't believe.
Oh, I know, I love it.
I know you're sad. I know you're sad, but it's, it's, it's not that I don't like the word Hub, but it's confusion. A lot of people have pointed out already, and so that's the only thing I had from Parks.
The other thing I want to mention about Park that I just received a couple of emails about McKee Farm Park. So there are some people very concerned about, that the people that have some houses around the, that ditch, big, big one on Isher Road Drive. The houses that go through, the backyard goes to the park. So they were very concerned that the water, they were using the sump up continually because they were concerned that the water was coming to the basement. So they are asking, what is our plan?
Well, I know this isn't an agenda item, but I was just, uh.
No, but we're in Park, so.
That's been forever. That's not new.
Briefly cover that. Obviously, the city council authorized a project down there that just completed last year, if my recollection is correct, that was an effort to do what we can to address stormwater. Obviously, this is a low-lying area of the city. The city is responsible to some degree to do what it can within reasonable expectation of controlling stormwater. I know Alder Jetser shared some photos of what McKee Farms Park looked like at approximately 7:00 AM this morning. And based on reports, by 9:30 or 10 o'clock already this morning, water had subsided significantly. I went through there about 4:30, 4:45 today. And to be honest with you, unless you saw the photos that were sent by Alder Jetser, you wouldn't have known that there was a problem with water in that park this morning. So I don't want to diminish the concerns of neighbors, but I've seen a number of sump pumps running, you know, wherever I've been the last couple of weeks just because of the amount of rainfall that we have had. But by and large, our stormwater engineer said that, you know, what he observed in those photos was expected. And in fact, a 100-year rain event actually would have had two to three feet more water there within the park, which, you know, gives, gives us all a bit of pause. And he did say that they will check to confirm that there aren't any obstructions or debris that got washed in during the most recent rain events to ensure that the, the things that are there are working properly and aren't obstructed.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention, Madam Mayor.
The other thing I want to mention that is in Park that I, you know, I walk the park a lot. The people, please, please put your trash in a garbage bin. I have seen diapers leave in the, in the express path, and I have collected and put in the bin. So, you know, we are welcome people to our parks to use them, but please, we need to protect and we need to be, take care. The other thing is I want people to be patient. There is a lot of noise in social media that, you know, we are not cutting the grass so frequently, or, and even, this has been a very, you know, a very rainy summer. You know, and we have limited capacity and resources at the city level, you know, and we have 60 parks, 800 acres of green spaces that we need to take care of. So be patient. It has been an unusual summer with a lot of rain. Everything is growing significantly fast. I want to tell you, I cut the grass twice in my house, four weeks, every week. So be patient. The city, we are trying, we know, I know some of the medium, people complaining about how the native plant are growing in the mediums, you know what I mean? Please be patient with that. We are trying to do our best here. Okay, moving to library board.
Yes, I would just like to take a moment. We don't meet until the 20th. But I did want to just take a moment to kind of show off something new at the library here. We have our new study pods up on the second floor. So there's eight total. They're going to offer, as you see here, a place to kind of sit and work quietly within an electrical outlet, a place to put some storage. There's a shelf behind that chair. And we've got eight total. Four of them are currently in the stacks, and four of them are kind of scattered around the second floor and will be moved into what is currently the technology room, which the wall will be coming down to open that up since it was not being utilized to its best capacity as kind of a computer lab with a bunch of long tables and desktop computers sitting there. So that will be, that's mostly done now, and they'll be in their new home in the coming weeks or months. And I just wanted to report that I heard from library director Wendy Rosson that the delivery crew had barely gotten the legs on them yesterday before patrons were already settling in. So it's already a well-utilized and well-loved amenity at the library.
They have that new study pod smell.
Anything else?
That's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. Commission on Asian Well?
Yes.
My apologies. The Commission on Asian Well, our outreach update. So just a reminder that our outreach goal is to increase participation at the center by older adults of color. Jill and Janice met with Allied Drive, Dunn's Marsh community leaders on Monday. Also a reminder to fellow council members that luncheon, that the luncheon learn on Wednesday, on Wednesday, 8:20, is dine with your alders. So I believe we'll all be there if folks can make it and schedules permit. The Fitchburg Senior Center Friends is hosting a Brat Sale on Friday, August 22nd. The sale will go from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and not only just folks on council welcome, but Fitchburg residents are welcome to attend. And the Senior Center will be taking on a UW social work intern starting in September. So looking forward to him or her joining the team and working with the staff at the Senior Center. That concludes my report on Asian Well.
Thank you. Resource Conservation Commission?
Yes, we met last night. We discussed our solid waste collection rates for next year. Pelletary's rate is going up at about 3.5% per year, but our fund balance is in excess of 30%, so we're gonna use a bit of that to temper that increase down to about 1.7%. So everybody will pay about four bucks more for trash collection next year as opposed to this year. We discussed our Fall Electronics Recycling and Paper Shredding Event. That'll be Saturday, September 13th here on the Civic Campus. Same vendors as last, as the event in spring, same setup, same, same rates for recycling various electronics that are, you know, TVs and monitors and stuff. And there is some theory that says the backup we had with paper shredding in the spring may not be a problem because during the summer, nobody has a chance to go through all their papers because they're busy outside playing. Green Thursdays are still in the works, so this would be events at the library. First Thursday of every other month, starting in November, we'll have a movie and/or a guest speaker and a discussion and probably some snacks, and it'll always be, you know, some sort of a sustainability conservation type of, you know, environmental topic. We got an update on the milk carton recycling program that RCC has been trying to get into MMSD and VASD for several years now. Chris Jamison joked that he's, he set a kind of a deadline in his head. He started this when, when his kid was in first grade and he wants to see it in actual policy and implementation by the time his kid graduates high school. We discussed food scrap collection, possible locations for the bins, and, you know, whether we can move them around from year to year to get a feel for, you know, where the best site within the city might be.
So when, when we are, this initiative will start?
I, I believe he's, Ben said that we should see a resolution coming forward in the next month or two.
Okay, good. Oh, we haven't seen it. I, because I, I pre-approved, oh, okay.
Well, while Chad is checking to see whether we referred it out tonight. There's also, we're still planning on having a bring-your-own-bag event, so go to the grocery store. And if you've brought your own bags, you'll get some sort of, you know, recognition or a coupon for an ice cream cone or whatever. But there could also be bags there for you to purchase, or just general education on, you know, the, the vast amount of plastic that grocery stores go through. And we also talked about partnering with the Bike and Pet Commission, or possibly TTC, or the Tree Advisory Committee, or the Landmark Preservation Committee on having a bike ride through the city to show off, you know, trees, historic trees, historic landmarks, whatever, you know, just a nice bike ride through the city showing off some of our features.
I like that idea. Thank you. Community and Economic Development Authority?
I've got that one. So we met, we had a joint.
You skipped TCC. You skipped TCC.
Oh, yes. Sorry, Joe.
I'll make it fast.
Transportation and traffic.
Our meeting on Thursday is canceled. No report.
We met on July 24th. It was a joint meeting with the Housing Advisory Committee. We reviewed the 2025 housing plan, so if you go on Fact TV, you can find that. We also, I'm also just sending a reminder to folks to fill out the housing survey. It closes on the 22nd. Encourage any alders to also promote that within your district. I know folks might be surveyed out, but it's really important to get perspectives on our housing needs.
That's it? Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. I can Rural Affairs Committee?
We meet next Tuesday, the 19th.
Okay, thank you. Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission?
We met on August 6th. We reviewed the updated bike and pedestrian plan. There are some new changes, but there's a lot of things that were currently in the plan that we still want to work on. We also are going to be, we have installed our last, or our latest final bicycle station. So we're talking about like how we can make celebration for that. There is an interest in doing another like walk around the neighborhood, the neighborhood like we did in Dunn's Marsh. So there's committee members that are interested in that. And we also talked about potentially doing a bike ride in collaboration with another committee as well. So I'm sure folks will coordinate.
Okay, thank you. Any question for Joe? EMS, we don't have any EMS. Can we do an update about that? That we are going through the negotiation or no?
Oh, I just want to add, sorry, the Bike and Pet Committee is going to be presenting at the committee of the whole in September.
Oh, okay, okay. EMS, Nicole is not here, but we have some update.
I think the most significant item is the district is currently in negotiations with the union representative. the union representing the paramedics for an updated contract. Their contract expires at the end of this year, so we'll look to keep the common council abreast of that.
Thank you. HNI.
No update right now.
Housing Advisory Committee.
We meet next on September 8th at 4:00 p.m.
Thank you. Landmark Preservation Commission.
No report.
Tree Advisory Committee.
Tree Advisory meets tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay, thank you. So next, okay, let me see where I am. Okay, so now I am in item nine, Standing Committees Report, Finance Committee.
I'll start with a quick report. We had the treasures report for June released. These treasure reports are in the finance packets usually every month, but sometimes they don't get to them every month. Sometimes you have two in a next month. But if you really want to learn where our investments are going, it's interesting to look through it. So any, any council member that wants to take a look or community member that wants to take a look, the treasure reports are always in the finance packet. For example, we had 11 certificates of deposit CDs matured during June and reinvested and the, the interest rates are still really good on CDs, like in the four to five percent range for a ton of them. So our investments are really strong and we're making quite a lot of money on our, on our savings account. So really interesting to take a look at where all that's going and, and both, we, we invest in it conservatively because we're a government and we want it to be relatively liquid, but, but we do make quite a lot of money on our, our money. And then the account, accounting clerk, one position is open for the city. So feel free to share out that, that position. It's a great one. Someone that handles money and also does human resources. We're kind of forward facing customer service for the department. And then I will move on to the resolutions. I'll move approval of resolution R.11925, establishing a new contract for copiers.
Second.
Finance approved this. IT is now responsible for all the copiers across the city and doing one bid. Previously, the departments did it individually. They did a, a new RFP, RIME. It was the vendor that was selected. They were significantly less expensive than others. It's going to be around 5,613 annually to rent the machines that go, that contract goes through 2030. But they are, so they're leased machines and we also pay per copy, which is, which taking a look at it, it's less expensive to pay per copy than to do a flat rate because we don't, fortunately, we print less things than we used to. So, and that is the contract.
Thank you. Any question? Here none. All those in favor of resolution R-119-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Next one.
I move to postpone resolution R.12325 to the August 26th meeting.
Second.
The development agreement is not prepared yet.
All those in favor of postponing resolution R-123-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Okay. Any update for personal committee? No.
I believe we meet September 3rd.
September, September, okay, September 3rd, okay. Then, okay, we did this, we did this, and then we move to resolution 135, 36-25.
I move approval of resolution R.13625, authorizing acceptance of 2025 surface maintenance bid.
Second.
Public Works approved.
Finance approved.
Any, what is this, Dave?
This is for the crack seals, slurry seal. This is being awarded to a different vendor this year, to Farner and 375,000.
360 something?
360. They have, they have, Farner has done work with the city, city before.
How many miles we are trying to do?
Well, we asked that. Is Tim still on? Yeah.
Tim?
It's, it, you know, sometimes it's more if you, miles or if you're doing the seal, it's square feet.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
But I'll let, I'll let Tim.
Yeah, the, the square yards, not the mileage.
Oh, okay. Different measurement. Confusing. Okay, fine. Okay, any other question?
I'll just add, you know, there was some questions about some streets we were, we were selecting. Alder Jettser brought up that, you know, they, they were rated pretty high, why were we doing them? And they, Tim explained the evaluation, they had dropped, dropped by a point and a half or so. So they were, those streets were kind of at the prime time to, to put the seal on to, to extend their lives. So thank God Alder Jettser for, you know, keen, keen eye looking at and asking that question.
Okay, any question, comments? Here none. All those in favor of resolution R-136-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Thank you. So now we are 11. I am not missing anything because we make.
You got it well under control.
So we are an unfinished business and we are talking about this resolution. Before we go to this, I want to tell you that because we don't want to be here until 12 o'clock at night. I think you have plenty of time to revise this CIP, plenty of time to revise, to review the amendments. So try to be to the point and so we can be out. I assume that all of you came to this meeting already know how you're going to vote in the amendment. So we don't need to, you know, stay here for hours, okay? Okay, so I don't know, Misty.
Start with the motion.
You're going to start the, this part of the show?
Should we start with the motion?
Oh, yeah.
I'll move approval of resolution R.125, adopting the 2026 to 2035 capital improvement plan CIP.
Second. Me or Joe? I don't know.
Huh?
Okay.
Whoever.
Okay, so now we're fine, isn't it?
Sure, yeah. So included on the city's website are the 12 amendments that were proposed by council members. Tonight, we can discuss them, we can amend the amendments, but there's no new projects off the floor. So that if people are interested in a particular project, if they see there's no amendment to it, they know that they didn't need to participate, or if they saw there was an amendment, they would want to participate. So really, it's just a way to make sure we're transparent and give everyone the opportunity to, to vet these ideas. So I don't have too much to share, other than we'll go one by one. Mayor, I assume you'll kind of lead the discussion and the amendment process. There's no limits technically on this process, technically, unlike budget, which is very formalized and lots of limits and all that stuff. But because it's a much smaller scope and with the 12 amendments, it should go a little quicker. There's also no requirement to hit certain dollar amounts with this because it is a plan. So if we plan to under here spend more in property taxes than what we actually think we'll have in property taxes, it's a problem that will have to get figured out for the budget purpose, but it's not necessarily a deal breaker for adopting the CIP tonight. So tonight, we'll go through the amendments one by one, discuss them, amendment, amend them, vote on them. At the end, then we will adopt the resolution, which adopts the official CIP for this year and that first year of projects, anything that's identified for 2026, will go in the first draft that the mayor receives of the 2026 operating budget. Again, she can change the priorities there, but we'd have to call them out to you, but it's kind of that first planning step.
That's all I have. Okay, thank you, Misty. Thank you, Misty. Okay, so, so you know, every one of you are going to entertain your motion, okay, for your, the amendment, and we need to have a second and then a discussion and then we vote, okay? Pretty easy. Okay, so we're going to start with amendment number one.
All right, I'd like to introduce amendment number one to CIP item number 2267, fire headquarters remodel, to delay the project by one year from 2026 to 2027.
Second motion.
Okay, can you explain why you're doing this?
Certainly. So this amendment is kind of multifaceted. My, my, I have a couple of thoughts. One of them is as we look at spending significant amounts of money on our city hall renovation, on the new police services facility, and as we've looked at our vehicle registration fee, we've looked at, you know, the assess, the assessments going up, it, it just seems like we're spending a lot of money asking folks for more and asking them to put money into every one of our facilities at the same time. I'd also point out that this is primarily driven, or at least partially driven by the tenant in this space, which would be UW Health Safe Kids. One of the items that this $500,000 would cover is for public, kind of more publicly accessible restroom facilities. For our city staff use, we use this facility for kind of more administrative and command staff from the fire department. So there isn't too much public in and out in this space from the city side. And then as we look through the, the, kind of the original proposal in the CIP, it had noted that UW Health is open to a, a conversation about increasing their rent and signing a longer term lease. But I introduced this item because we don't have that codified in writing in terms of how much more they'd be willing to pay, what that, you know, how long an additional lease we'd be looking at. So I felt like I needed more information before I was ready to, to move forward on that next year. And then finally, I'll point out that we also spent about half a million dollars on this facility just a couple of years ago to kind of form the emergency operations center. So since it's a building that's already built in 1971, I believe off the top of my head, it, it seems prudent to review whether we need some of these improvements and maybe next year either scale it back or have some more information to make a more, kind of more concrete decision.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? Okay, okay, Gabriela.
I don't support this. I think we should move forward with this. I think this building is not only used for the UW Health, it's also used as a polling place. And we also use it for city events, like for example, the fire department, the new fire chief reception was held there. It's quite a nice facility for events like that. So there are more functions for the building aside from just those two things where the public is in the space. I, the longer we delay projects like this, typically the more expensive they get. And so I think we should move forward with it and I'm comfortable keeping it in the CIP for next year.
Can I ask you a question? Oh, you want to?
I can wait till Alder speak if you.
Okay.
Alder Lotisay?
Do we have any information on kind of the timeline of the negotiations with UW Health or what that would look like?
So we haven't engaged in formal negotiations at this point in time. It's a little bit of a chicken and egg situation. Obviously, they would need to see some commitment from the common council before they would like to begin negotiations in earnest. Prelimarily, the conversation has been positive. You know, be premature to talk about dollar amounts and terms, but I, I think it's safe to say that UW Health recognizes the investment that the common council might be making in this facility and are willing to look to, to have that lease reflect that investment. And I will further build upon some comments that Alder Gerhart made in so much as he has. This is a polling location. There are some ADA issues that could stand to be resolved in this building. Alder Reichs, it is correct, some remodeling has taken place already within the firehouse, specifically the EOC, Emergency Operations Center and the office area for our administrative staff. And a couple or a few doors and windows have also been updated as part of this process, but there are other doors and windows that still need to be updated and upgraded. There's flooring and other building fixtures within particularly the, the lease space that have not been upgraded in the nearly 50 years or so that this building has been in use. So there are a number of things that still need to be done with this building. And one of the conversations that the mayor and I had was, well, how long does this building potentially serve as fire administration headquarters? And I said, well, if I look at how long it typically takes to build a city facility or relocate a city facility, at least 10 years, probably longer. So I think that if we're looking at making this investment and then entering into a long term lease, it does allow the city council some time to further assess where, when and how a potential relocation of our administrative staff for our fire department, what that looks like.
The other thing that I found out recently is that the fire department are planning, planning to use, what is that? Is it facility and a small tower? Where is?
Yeah, there's the old well house that's been abandoned, yeah.
And they're going to renovate it, I don't know what they do, but they are going to do training there too. They're planning to do more training in that station. So I don't know. There's some initiative there. So I don't know. Do this, this is a time sensitive project?
Well, based upon the current condition of some of the lease facilities in particular, as well as the exterior windows and doors, I would say the time sensitivity, well, it's not at the upper, you know, highest level. It is at least above, above average. In particular, I know our city clerk had mentioned at our department head meeting, the ADA issues that need to be resolved as a polling location. So we'd look to get that done, obviously, as quickly as possible.
Okay, any other question, comment? Okay, we are going to do roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Dancer Jr.?
Nay.
Alder Gerhart?
Nay.
Alder Herbs?
Aye.
Alder Jettser?
Nay.
Alder Lotisay?
Nay.
Alder Maldonado?
Nay.
Alder Regston?
Aye.
Motion failed.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for bringing forward the amendment, okay? Okay, so next we move to amendment number two.
I'll move amendment number two, CIP 3509, South Dale Bike Path, Reduce Scope of Project.
We need a second. Here none, the amendment fail on the table.
Don't expect me to second anyone's amendments for discussion. That's, that's disappointing that you can't have the discussion. I'm, I'm very disappointed.
Can anyone second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Yeah, second.
I know it won't pass. So as I, as I look at this, I've walked down and looked at it. Everyone's going, well, we have a federal grant. If you read the grant from the state, it's a carbon reduction and, and they stayed in there if federal funds are available. They've granted it to us, but if federal funds are available. I think you should recognize the federal government is looking at these things and anything with carbon on there, they're, they're catching. So I, I would like the path, but I think we should take the path. We should take the tack that we reduce the amount so that we can fund it ourselves. I don't want to design this thing and then get no money while we still will go back to taxpayers. We have a certain amount. I've walked it, I looked, they talk about a bridge, the culvert extends out beyond the road wide enough. It won't be a problem to get there. A guardrail could be put along Rimrock or MM to have the bike path there that would connect into the existing capital city. So I, I think we should, I think we should reduce this and, you know, say it's a federal grant, it's still our taxpayer money, we're 37 trillion in debt. I, I think we could do this for a less cost and, and accomplish what we, what we want. And that's what I'm, that's what I'm looking to do also. It's touted as carbon reduction. Come on, we'll spend more, we'll generate more carbon building it and plowing it than, you know, it ties into the bike trail. Well, people are going to recreate anyway, but it's not close to a commerce center by the time they ride all the way down Sine or go the other way. You know, it's, it's a nice recreational, recreational thing. That's, that's all I wanted to say.
So I have a question for, this is what I understand from you, Dave, that I think you think that we can do this for $250,000, but instead of going, doing like the ball walk, we can do like?
Right along the road. I've walked it. It's, it's wide enough.
We can do it, you know?
You, you would need a, you would need to put a guardrail for safety along, but guardrails, posts and guardrail are not that, not that expensive. And there's a shoulder there, it's wide enough, it could be paved, there may be some stabilization. And the culvert extends well beyond the edge of the road, so something to go over the culvert of the creek is, is not that difficult. So that's why I believe we can do it for less money. And I've also heard that maybe the county is doing some work on MM there. I don't, I don't know. I have, maybe Tim knows something about that. Someone mentioned that to me.
Tim, can you come to the microphone so you can answer? Tim, can you come to the microphone so you can answer? And you can, is it, is it possible to do what Dave is recommending?
So what was proposed was a 10-foot-wide multi-use pass. That most likely will not fit, you know, given.
You're correct. I agree.
So we would have to narrow that down. There are kind of a paved bike lane shoulder. We could look at potentially adding a buffer to that. Obviously, the county would need to approve that. It is a county-owned and maintained roadway. They are resurfacing MM next year, but it's more north of this project.
And when is this project to be? I don't see it here. It was in 2028?
I believe so. And then the Ross had reached out to the state regarding the grant. So they're right now writing up the state municipal agreement. So as soon as we receive that, we'd bring that back through council for execution. And that would solidify the funding for this project. So as long as the state executes that with us, the money would be guaranteed.
But the, the grant, I am confused. The grant is a federal grant or a state grant?
It is a federal grant, but they run it through the state. The state kind of manages that, that grant and the funding.
So we don't know when we are gonna get the money?
We will. Once we get the agreement, we'll know we have the money.
Ah, yeah, yeah, okay. So it's like a?
The state won't send us an agreement if they're not getting the money.
Oh, okay. So there is like a, I want to understand, so the money is there?
Yes, as long as the agreement comes to us.
Oh, so the money is there?
One, hold your breath.
Okay.
I'll also point out, the Greater Madison MPO Policy Board passed an amendment to the Transportation Improvement Program to include this in the 2025 to 2029 TIP.
What is the TIP?
The Transportation Improvement Plan.
Okay. Please speak in plain English.
Sorry.
Okay.
So this was one of, I don't know, nine or 10 items that were approved in that amendment.
Okay.
So what does that mean? I'm just, hold on, let's just make sure. Like when you say it was one of 10 items approved, that like?
That, that means that this is now in the Transportation Improvement Plan. The Greater Madison MPO is planning on dispersing these funds specifically for this project.
And also some of the other funding is will be TID, isn't it? With TID, number 16?
The existing project in the CIP was in a 50-50 split between TID and borrowing.
Okay. Okay.
And the remaining $328,000 local share would, is lower than 50% of, of the original project budget.
And can you explain for the people that they are gonna be listening or watching this, why it costs too much? Is because of the wetland? The boardwalk has to go through the wetland?
Yeah, so what we were proposing was a 10-foot-wide multi-use path. It's about 1,700 feet long. And depending on where the wetlands encroach onto the edge of the roadway, we'd have to go out with a boardwalk into the wetland.
Okay, okay, okay.
But if we have sufficient space from the edge of the, the road, our preference would be to do an asphalt path. So we're gonna maximize that wherever we can. However, if a wetland encroaches, we're gonna have to go out into a, into the wetland with a boardwalk.
Okay. Okay. Any other question? Please.
Oh, I just want to say, I appreciate the sentiment and especially the concern about the federal money. We have tons of federal money that is coming in. That came into the state that probably will still come through to the city over the next couple of years. Some of the new funds I don't think are gonna be coming out. But I appreciate the sentiment, David, to think, think through the, whether or not we actually will have that money available. And that is an important concern. But you'll hear from this, from me again tonight, but I just think that looking at the project out in 2028 to 2029, I, I think the point is well-taken, Dave, that we should try to, you know, avoid a boardwalk as much as possible because that is extraordinarily expensive and disruptive to a wetland. So like, we shouldn't do that if we don't have to. But I think there's enough time for us to consider that. And hopefully, the public works got the message that that's something that we'd like. Of course, we want to minimize the cost where we can. And I, I would echo that as well, to try to, try to do that.
Yes, that's our preference, too, of from a department standpoint, maintaining an asphalt path is a lot easier than a boardwalk. So wherever we can maximize that, we, we will make sure that happens.
Okay, Logan.
Yep. So I'll echo a lot of what Alder Gerhart said. A lesson until we find out that this grant is for sure not coming, I would like to keep this project programmed. This is a very, I would not call this at all a low-stress off-street or, or I guess on-street facility. If, when Sine Road is open, this is the way that I will bike to the university quite a bit. And even just that short little stretch on my e-bike where I can get up to 25 miles an hour with the throttle, the cars are going 40 and the way they whip around the corner, it is not a safe, safe connection. I've gotten multiple emails from folks both inside or kind of in this area and also even as far south as Greenfield who have said that they support keeping this item, wanting to move forward with it because it connects to the greater, you know, Madison-area trail network. If you look at off-street facilities, if you go, you really have to go as far west as Cannonball Trail to get north of the Belt Line. And if you go east, you have to go all the way into the Baxter Park Spur or take the Cap City Trail all the way out to Lake Farm Park and then wrap back around. So there's a several-mile stretch where we have no low-stress connection between Fitchburg and Madison. And for folks who want to ride into the greater trail network, this is a really important connection, and what's there now is not sufficient. You know, I've written down the path along Fish Hatchery Road, kind of just near City Hall here, was it near Bjorkston and Cheryl, where kind of the pavement comes together with the same pavement as, as the street. And even with some bollards, it feels a little uncomfortable. And again, that's a 40 mile per hour street with, you know, county highway with that level of traffic. I certainly, you know, I will also echo the point that I think it would be nice to avoid the boardwalk if possible. But I've heard enough from folks that this is an important connection, not only to Madison, but to the recently annexed Southdale neighborhood. And having that connection for one of our healthy neighborhoods, having that ability to tie into our city's infrastructure as well, I think it is something that I don't want to jeopardize. And to Alder Herbs, that's why I didn't want to move forward with, with seconding this. I know we, we were the only two who voted the same on the previous amendment. On this one, I just fundamentally disagree with making any significant changes unless and until we find out that we are forced to do so due to funding concerns.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, Bill Short?
Yes, this is, this is also another piece that will link Southdale to Terre Vessa. When we have that underpass, under, under double M, and the trail will eventually continue up that stretch of double M.
Joe?
Just also saying that the Bike and Pet Commission has spoken in favor of this as well. I also don't think that we should preemptively remove items from a CIP because of the potential of losing funding, just because I, I think that's what a CIP is for. As Misty has said, it's, it's, it's projects that we're planning on doing. And when we get to the budget process, you know, if, if something like that were to happen, we, we would need to recalibrate, but not right now.
Yeah, okay.
I know how it's gonna go, but I, the point I'd like to make, I'm not saying I don't want that trail, okay? I want that very clear.
No, no, I know.
People say, "Herbs doesn't like bicycling."
No, no.
No, don't, you know, I, I want the trail. I just think there's a better, more cost-effective option.
You're a bike rider, so we know that, you know, you care about bikes and trails. So, okay, any other comments? No? Okay, so we are gonna vote.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Dancer Jr.?
Nay.
Alder Gerhart?
Nay.
Alder Herbs?
Aye.
Alder Jettser?
Nay.
Alder Lotisay?
Nay.
Alder Maldonado?
Nay.
Alder Reigston?
Nay.
Motion failed, 7-1.
Okay, thank you. So next we move to, please, number three.
Yes, I will, would like to move forward amendment number three to CIP item number 3511, Bike Lane Additions, to add bike lanes on Larson Road.
Second. All right.
Why are you doing this?
Yeah, so currently there's a gap of about 1,500 feet or from the new trail that was constructed on the far eastern border of the city to where Lacy Road will connect with Meadowview and then up to the Cap City Trail. The stretch of Larson Road that's in there right now is a 40 mile per hour rural road with next to no shoulders, next, no signage of any sort that you're riding between a new neighborhood with thousands of residents and a very common bicycle facility for our entire network. With this item, I realize that it's a significant hurdle is the fact that right now this is the boundary between us and the town of Blooming Grove. The town of Blooming Grove will not exist come 2027 when they are absorbed into the city of Madison. So to allow for extra time to have that conversation with Madison, which probably, I assume they would not want to spend millions of dollars right away or hundreds of thousands of dollars, whatever it ends up being, on upgrading infrastructure in the former town, I put this in kind of the back, back of the CIP as kind of a, more of a long-term vision, though I certainly would not be opposed to moving it up if and as funding allows. I'll address the, the staff memo that was included as well that said there's a preference for a multi-use path here on the east side of the road. Currently, there's a path on the west side of the road up to Meadowview, which is where Lacy will connect. Then that trail would cross over onto the east side of the road and continue up to the Cap City Trail so that you're not crossing at the sharp curve of Larson and East Clayton, which is certainly would be a problematic approach. And I'll be, you know, kind of frank, I am less concerned about whether we get, you know, whether the end product is a bike lane on-street or an off-street trail. Certainly, my preference would be the off-street trail. My goal with bringing this forward is to have some kind of commitment at this point that we would like to make this happen within the next 10 years rather than waiting until 2027 or 2028 to begin to have the conversation. I'd like to show that we have some recognition of the importance of this project to the eastern side of the city.
Yes, I, I was just asking Scott while you were talking if he could pull it up on a map. So if you could, if you could guide, like, the map, I'm a visual person.
Yeah, thank you. I was struggling with it myself.
Do you need me to do that, Scott?
You've got it, and you know where it's at?
I can try to grab it here. Hang on one second.
I have a question for Logan. Is this something that you've heard from other people or is this a personal experience that? Because I'm surprised I've never heard this before since it's kind of an obvious missing piece.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be honest, it was personal experience when I was riding to work one day. And then I noticed as I was coming home that day, I think I saw four or five other bikes in 1,500 feet, again, on a rural stretch of road. So it was something that I, that I have, have not had the chance to kind of float with some of the neighbors, but I do not think there'd be too much opposition. And again, one of the reasons I want to have it kind of at the back of the CIP to have more of a long-term conversation, but have it in the conversation.
This has also come up in the past on Facebook forums, Madison Bikes and/or Bike Fitchburg. And I think the conclusion was we would, because it's Fitchburg, we would need to do it on the west side of the road, and that would require property acquisition and maybe would be unlikely. And on the, on the east side of dealing with the town of Blooming Grove would be problematic. I guess I'm, I'm curious, too, if we put it on the east side and become, you know, that would be within the city of Madison, what sort of cost sharing or, you know, how would we work that out with the city of Madison? I mean, do we typically pay for infrastructure in other jurisdictions?
No.
I think Chad pulled it up right now. See on my screen. Yeah, Logan, if you could talk us through on that map what you're referring to theoretically, I, I understand, but.
Certainly.
I gotta see it.
So you can see where Terre Vessa is now, the lots at the south end. Lacy is that road, the widest road that kind of curves up to the north. And if you follow that yellow line on the right-hand side where it's kind of a diagonal polygon, and then it cuts off, there is, that's where Lacy Road will connect. There's currently a multi-use trail on the western edge of, of that kind of property line there. So that's on the Fitchburg side from Meadowview, which is the road heading to the east in the town of, it's Blooming Grove on the north and I believe Dunn to the south. And then there's a gap going up to the north here. This is past Barnwood Events and then up to the corner where you can see the Capital City Trail coming in east to west, kind of that curve along East Clayton. And then to the north is the Baxter Park Spur, which then connects you up to the neighborhood south of Moreland Road in the city of Madison. And then east heads to Lake Farm Park and west heads into, further into Fitchburg. So there is, like I said, there's currently next to no shoulder, whether it's gravel or anything, it's pretty abrupt. It's 40 mile per hour speed, and then you've got a 90-degree curve right where the path kind of just throws you off if you want to head south into Fitchburg.
And there's a bit of a hill there that's somewhat blind as well.
There is, yes.
Okay, so everyone has an idea what we're talking, okay? Okay, so any other comments?
Well, I guess I'm, I'm still wondering if this belongs in our CIP or in the city of Madison. Can we get any commentary from staff?
I, I think what you could elect to do is if you want to put it, I think Alder Reich said had it in 2035, it at least puts it on the radar. And that at least gives an indication to staff that it's something that the common council would like us to explore at some point in the future. It looks like the city of Madison has said after the attachment of the town of Blooming Grove would be an opportunity for them to have that conversation. So assuming this continues to be in the CIP and that, you know, timeframe shrinks down, becomes more and more realistic for city staff, you know, once it pretty much hits that five-year mark that, yeah, this is something that is much more likely to happen. So I don't see any harm. As Misty said, this is a plan. If you want to put it at 2035, it at least puts it out there. And as that timeframe gets closer, the city staff will engage with Madison to kind of talk logistically how it might work.
So Blooming Grove is gonna be absorbed into Madison?
Yeah.
So then if this were to come up in the future, like the years leading up to it, we'd basically talk to Madison officials and maybe a Madison Alder would want to put this in their CIP together with us or? Okay. I don't, I'm not opposed to it, especially if it's that far out. You know, who knows what that area is gonna look like in the future? And it may be worth exploring. Or maybe there will just be a whole new plan because it'll all, it'll all be developed. But I'm not opposed to the conversation coming up.
And to that point, I think even after reading the staff memo, I was a little concerned about having it as bike lanes versus like a multi-use path. But now I think even more to the point, we would keep it in as a, a bike lane on the existing street because then at least one of those would be in the city of Fitchburg on the western side. And then the eastern side would be town of Blooming Grove until '27, then it's Madison. So that way, that would be a project that we would like what we've, are proposing or have done on Fitchrona. It's kind of splitting the cost and then we can refine more if and as the time comes.
So we are gonna go to a vote, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Dancer Jr.?
Aye.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herbs?
Aye.
Alder Jettser?
Aye.
Alder Lotisay?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Reigston?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. So next we move to amendment number four.
I move approval of amendment number four, postpone Lake Barney watershed.
Second.
Okay, why do you want to do this?
Lake Barney is a project that was discussed quite a lot back in 2020, 2021 time period because there was a large period of high rain that Lake Barney levels got very high, was encroaching upon a property pretty significantly. They got kind of a little bit of moat around their building for a little while, I think. But a couple of reasons for this, right now it's placed in 2027, which is pretty imminent. We cannot do this until the Village of Oregon. We cannot do this until the Village of Oregon builds a conveyance channel, which they have no current plans to do. So I think there's almost no way that would happen in 2027. Also, currently, the project is just not at, the water level is not at the level that we would necessitate spending this much money on it. And it's probably going to cost, I would think it costs a lot more than $700,000. I think that's probably an under because potentially you're looking at what, there has been discussion of potentially doing wetland offset credits. Like, this could be a very expensive project and I just don't think it's likely in 2027. And I think having it in 2027 makes it seem imminent when I just don't think it, I don't think that's an honest assessment of where we are with that project.
How long are you proposing to delay it, Danielle?
I think I pushed it to 2031.
Okay, thank you.
Have we checked how Lake Barney is behaving lately?
I think Alder Gerhart reached out to Ben shortly.
Yeah, I talked to Ben before putting this amendment forward, but if Ben wants to comment on it at all, I just know that he said that the, we are in a different period than we were back when we were talking about it in 2020.
Yeah, so I haven't been out there recently, but, you know, it's certainly nowhere near the water levels that we're seeing in the 2020, 2019 time period. It's still gone down significantly. You know, there was quite a bit of rain last year, about 10 inches over the average. I think when we saw the levels that we did in 2020, there was, you know, 30-plus inches over average over a time period. So, yeah, it's, it's not really an imminent threat of overtopping like it had been in the past.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other comment question? So, okay, let's vote, please.
Alder Dancer Jr.
Aye.
Alder Gerhart.
Aye.
Alder Herbst.
Aye.
Alder Jetser.
Aye.
Alder Lotte Say.
Aye.
Alder Maldonado.
Aye.
Alder Reigsted.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. So amendment number five.
Mayor, I'm going to kind of combine amendment five and number seven. The rationale is the same for CIP 4333, remove the sewer and water, the water on 4802 to remove those from the CIP. I would move those two forward.
Yeah.
I'll second.
I think we have to go one by one, Dave.
Oh, I can't do both? Okay.
No, you can talk, but.
Okay, well, number five, I guess, the second. So I am just responding to what the neighbors have told us at meetings, you know, that they don't want it. Obviously, it's a complex issue, but they don't want it. I'm also concerned that investment, we kind of got a stranded investment that the utility is paying for, you know, until things move along. So I, you know, I mostly just, what the neighbors have said, they do not, they do not want this. So that's my, that's why I proposed it. I was asked, asked by a number of neighbors. I would be willing to delay it to sometime 2030 or later, but that's all I wanted to say on it.
Okay, who second this? Okay, so I want to understand, Dave, why is the reasoning that the neighbor are rejecting this, is because of the connectivity?
I think that all, I believe that, I believe that's a large part of it, yeah.
I get what I speak to.
Go ahead, yeah, it's more, more you mic up, too.
I mean, the main things that I hear are, one, the cost of connection, I mean, that's a big one. And two, the impression that laying that foundation will encourage development in the area, I guess, is a concern for some neighbors. I've had a lot of conversations with people about this down there. I'm not averse to making changes to this in the future, but this kind of falls in the bucket to me of this is a 2029 project that has a lot of currently moving parts on it. We're in the middle of the neighborhood plans in that area and I think that there needs to be, I have talked to a lot of owners down there, but I think there needs to be further discussion around a number of things. One, specifically that if we delay this and development does occur after we pave that road, like, all of that additional cost of that road reconstruction, to rip up the road, install the sewer line, repave the road, is going to be assessed to the homeowners as well. And so I just want to communicate that. We, I know you, the mayor's discussed some sort of funding assistance for people in that area as part of the Plan Commission meeting. I also am interested in exploring that. Those conversations need to start and happen and be had with staff and looking at funding sources. And I know that there's also an interest in just moving up the road. The road's in really bad shape and there, I think the grant for that road is currently in process or has just been submitted or is something to that effect. There's just a lot of moving parts on this and I just don't know that pulling this out right now at this time is the best choice. It may be in the future, depending on plans and things like that, but like right now, we need to kind of put this plan in place and then determine kind of how it's going to affect the area and then make our decisions then.
Tim, do you want to add anything? Because you're the engineer, you're the expert, you know?
I guess I'll just start kind of with the status of the grant. We did submit an application to the NPO this past, last week. So kind of the next step is it's to be submitted to Wisconsin Department of Transportation by the end of October. Believe the deadline's October 31st. I would expect to probably not hear anything from Wisconsin Department of Transportation till probably spring of next year. So kind of, you know, along the timeframe of our CIP, when we're working on it, next year, I'm hoping we would hear something that, you know, if we get the grant, then, you know, we can, the money would be available 2030 or 2031. So we would have to adjust kind of the timeframe laid out now and push it farther. And then if we're not successful in getting the grant, the next application cycle would be in 2029. And then the funding for that program cycle wouldn't be till 2034 or 2035. So I think kind of the big thing is waiting to see what happens with the grant and then us adjusting accordingly. If we get the grant, you know, do we make the decision to move forward with it and then, you know, do something in the meantime with the roadway? Because it's not going to be till 2030, 2031.
I have a question, Tim. The grant is for what? Is for the road or is for the sewer?
So the grant is for the bike lanes.
Ah, the bike lanes.
The bike lanes and also the reconstruction of the road. So the application was for the total cost of the project for construction, not including the right-of-way or the design, was $2.6 million. And the application was applying for $2 million in funding, which was 80% of the cost for construction. And then the city would be, cover the remaining 500 and, I think, $24,000.
So, okay, I am confused. So, so, but the Irish Lane, we need to reconstruct that without the bike lanes, okay? We have the money to pay for that. We're going to pay with debt, isn't it? The bike lanes is something that we would like to add.
Yes.
But we want to use grant for that.
Yes, so the grant is for, includes the bike lanes.
Ah, includes, okay.
Includes the bike lanes. And then the city funding would then come from probably the street resurfacing.
Or that.
Project.
But I guess, but I thought like if we did that, though, like just to like fix the street and then later, like that's a cost we incur. And then without this sewer and water, we incur another cost if we have to go back and like redo it later again, correct? From what I understood, what we talked about.
Yes.
And that's not what we want to, like, the most cost-effective thing to do.
No, and there's a couple, like Alder Lotte Say said, a lot of moving parts. So the roadway is deteriorating right now. So if we push it to 2030, 2031, because we get a grant, you know, I would look into potentially doing a, not, some type of resurfacing, like a overlay or potentially a mill and overlay to at least get the road in good condition to make it last till 2030, 2031. And then at that time, with the grant, come in and do the bike lanes and then do a pulverize and resurface. So you would be grinding up that existing asphalt. That'd be your new base and then coming in and overlaying on top of that.
But I have another question because, I know, the road is in very, very bad shape condition. But what happened if we do the road and then if we get the grant money, you know, we use, instead of doing a bike lane, we do like a pass? You know what I mean, like, you know? I don't know. I know this is going to be more costly because we need to have, oh, yeah, I know.
Yeah.
When I say allow, I know all this thing that we need to do and, yeah, because we need to buy practically the east, you know, they have access to the, yeah.
I don't think it's enough road for the bus, Madam Mayor.
Right now, one of the memo, there were some pictures kind of of the north side of the road with the large trees that we would have to remove with an off-street path.
Yeah, the trees that are like heritage trees.
Then would water and sewer have to go under the road?
So that the water would be proposed on the south side of the road and then the sewer would go down the middle of the roadway. Because of the north side, they're just with the trees, it's not feasible.
Thank you.
Okay, W.
Yeah, I think this project obviously deserves further discussion. I'm glad we're discussing it and I think Public Works knows, based on the public response and also just the indication of how many amendments were completed to these projects, that this is obviously something that deserves further scrutiny. I'm not interested in making any changes at this time, given the fact that we do have some lead time here, but I think all of those options should be explored in terms of, do we delay and do we do a resurfacing in the meantime? Like, I think it'd be good to consider all of those options, but I think we just need more time and I think we probably will know more before the next CIP process. And maybe Public Works would even propose their own changes before the next CIP for the mayor's proposal. So anyway, I prefer to keep this as is for now.
Madam Mayor, I'll withdraw amendments five and seven.
Before you vote on that, can I just add something? Mayor Ratafra and I have had conversation and staff has been provided with some direction that we do know we need to look at potential ways in which we could also help offset connection costs and/or perhaps, you know, look at ways that maybe they could even be delayed to the extent that we have legally available to us. So that is another piece of this equation. We know that their costs are a significant concern related to connection for residents. So, you know, assuming this project at least stays in the CIP, staff will also continue to look at that aspect of the project as well.
We've only, though, are you looking at giving them a break on the costs? Because we can't do that. People have paid for connection charges. We've delayed, you know, we've given them a longer window for, to pay it off, but I think it would be unfair to anyone else that's ever connected to say, all right, we're, say taxpayers are going to fund your connection.
Sure. There's a lot of, a lot of unanswered questions there, Alder Herbst, and it would be premature for me to offer any solution to that.
Fair enough.
But I do think that, you know, there's a conversation that the council wants to have on this and it will be staff's obligation to at least provide the Common Council with some options for consideration and whether or not the council ultimately wants to pursue any of those based upon staff information and recommendation, obviously is a conversation for another time. But your point is well, well-taken that we have to wade into this cautiously.
Yeah, no, I know. It's especially if we are, we are the one pushing for this. So regarding the water, I think we need to have a discussion, too, because the water is no link to the Greenfield neighborhood. You know, this is what I want to clarify. I don't know, Tracy's here, if you can, I don't know, Tracy, that one is your, my understanding is we need to do the water main because.
Are we moving into that on the agenda? Because if so, we could ask.
Okay, so we are going to vote on this one? Okay. Oh, he withdrew? Okay, but I want to clarify that because there's a lot of misinformation about this one. And since you're here, I want you to clarify what is about this water main.
So I would, I would recommend, just so we follow the agenda, Alder Herbst had mentioned he would like to withdraw amendment five and seven. How about we just withdraw five at this point if that's what you'd like to do? And then we will obviously get to amendment seven and could have the water line conversation or water main conversation at that time.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Okay, so, okay, so, so next we move to number?
Number six.
Six, who's this one?
I'll approve amendment number six. This is also related to the Irish Lane sanitary sewer extension and is to add content to the description.
Second.
No, no, yeah.
Second, that motion.
So this is, we talked a little bit about this. This came up during the Plan Commission meeting around the Greenfield neighborhood plan and then also at council. I thought at minimum be prudent to add some context to the text of it because if you just read it without further context based on discussion, it's not really clear for property owners. So I worked with plan staff and Public Works staff and kind of coupled this together with their help. Please jump in if you want to make any last-minute changes to this if this does potentially pass. So just for people that are watching along, the content to be added would be note for property owners on Irish Lane. While the sanitary sewer infrastructure is scheduled to be installed in 2029 along with the road reconstruction and water main improvements, the sanitary sewer along Irish Lane cannot be placed into service until the Siene Interceptor Extension, CIP 4638, is constructed south to Irish Lane. Please note the Siene Interceptor is currently located north of Lacy Road and would need to be constructed approximately 6,100 feet south to Irish Lane. While proximity to a new sanitary sewer line can require property owners to connect, residents will not be obligated to connect to the Irish Lane sanitary sewer until it is connected to the Siene Interceptor.
Okay, and I have another question. So when we install the sewer extension, but is the state that is mandate resident to connect, isn't it? It's not the city, isn't it? Someone told me that today. I don't know.
Yeah, it's a Dane, it's a Dane County requirement.
Ah, Dane County, okay, okay.
It's a city requirement, too, but.
Ah, okay, okay, I want to be sure. Okay, both, okay.
And also, MMSD requires us to have an ordinance because, you know, they do the treatment for us. They require that we have an ordinance that they have to connect once it's available.
And we have an ordinance, isn't it?
We do.
Okay, so I want to be sure of that because I was confused. Okay, so any question?
Oh, Logan. Yeah, just a quick kind of follow-up to that, Tracy. If we, if we have an ordinance and we say we're not going to, as the city of Fitchburg, require folks to connect, but the county also has, or MMSD or and/or the county have these ordinances, these regulations, would they still be required under those rules to connect or would ours kind of supersede and say, we've granted this exception? So that the end result is that they don't have to connect? Not, Fitchburg isn't making us connect, but Dane County is, so we kind of make somebody else the bad guy? But still, the end result, you know, would be they'd have to connect. So I just want to make sure that I'm clear on that point.
Regardless of whether or not we had an ordinance, they would have to connect per Dane County requirements. So us having an ordinance doesn't affect, doesn't change that if we didn't have one.
So then would, would we have to, if residents are concerned about that and we were to grant an exception, kind of like what is, what is written in amendment six, would the county have to do the same or?
If the sewer's not avail, the sewer's not available till it's connected to the Siene Interceptor. So regardless of whether it's in the street or not, if it's not connected to the interceptor, it can't service them. So we're not in violation of anything.
Okay.
Because it's not serviceable yet.
Okay, thank you.
Mike?
Just with the, I got a couple of questions about this, too, and I really appreciate this going in, just to get some clarity. I think there's, I think there's still, the concern is that we, the big concern is that we would push the interceptor all the way to Irish absent development in the area, I think is what some residents are concerned that we would do. I just want to state that, I guess, I have no intention of supporting something like that. I would want development to cause that to occur, but I think that is a concern in the area and I just wanted to address that. I think that this is good language to have in here, but I just want to kind of add that along to it. I don't think it's anything that needs to go in here, but that's just, that's a concern in the area and I just wanted to raise it.
I think from the city's standpoint, even, you know, Public Works, we don't want to put it in unless it's needed because it's a cost that we have to hold for many years. You know, we only collect the, the. You know, we we only collect the the cost for that interceptor when people connect.
And and I guess with it being in the ground, though, like the as far as what? Yes, Alder Lotisay said, like, I didn't want to call you Mike, I'm sorry. It sounded informal, but um, but isn't that preempting growth? Like, that that's potentially anticipated in this, in that district, though?
So sorry.
So like how you said you didn't want it, like you don't, you wouldn't support it in the ground until there was something there?
Right, so there's a reason to to utilize the interceptor that far down, yeah. So like not exactly, not preemptively putting it in the ground. So the interceptor itself, not necessarily the Irish Lane Sanitary Sewer, like the interceptor coming down and connecting to it, like absent growth in the area, yeah.
So, okay, so for the people that are going to be watching this, because they're going to be watching this part. So if we install the sewer extension, but the interceptor is not connected, so we are not going to charge them.
We would defer their assessment until it's a benefit to them. Because just because it's in, if it's not connected to the interceptor, it's not a benefit to them.
Okay, okay. And this will take, I think the concern of the people say why we're going to, the city is going to expend money now and we don't know when the interceptor is going to be installed. You know what I mean? I think that one is one of the concern.
Yes.
Okay. I don't know. That one is, okay, I don't know. I know why we are doing it, but, you know.
Is it, yeah, so do we feel like this language is clarifying enough? Like, it doesn't, you know, it says the interceptor needs to come down all the way to Irish Lane. There's no, there's, nobody knows how long that's going to take, right? We we first have to approve the Greenfield Neighborhood Plan, then somebody needs to sell a chunk of land and then the developer needs to come forward and say they want to do something. And and that's the earliest this interceptor would be needed. So we're realistically talking about 20 years?
So I played around with actually adding context to the interceptor plan as well. And I put much stronger, more specific language in my first draft. And I think as we, as I got feedback from staff, it was just became very evident that you don't, you don't want to get too specific because we don't want to like, it's hard to get specific. So I think this is, I I tried to get as specific as I could without saying anything that's incorrect or that would become incorrect suddenly because something changed. And again, please jump in if you feel like something in this text doesn't work for you, like, tell me. Because we have a chance to change it now. But I don't know, I I try to like thread a needle in it. I don't think it's perfect, but at least it explains that there's a connection then, there's more to it. So it's certainly not a perfect solution.
Yeah, I I just, I get the feeling that residents are looking at 2029 and thinking, oh, my God, I'm going to have to spend $30,000 four years from now.
Yeah, the other problem with the Sine Interceptor Extension is that there is an extension of it happening. It's just not an extension to Irish Lane.
Right.
So, right, I believe that there's an extension happening that coincides with this date. It's just not the extension that this is referencing. And that's what, that's the other problem. It's like there's just this date coincidence that's actually not related.
And so so here's the conversations that I've been having a lot of, which is, so we're not requiring hookup until that except the interceptor comes all the way down. And we're, and we're saying, well, that could be 15 years, it could be 20 years. And so then the the question that comes to me after that is, well, then why are you putting the pipe under Irish Lane if it's not going to be 15 or 20 years? And the answer is, we just don't know exactly when this is going to happen. So we're trying to do the best we can to prepare as well as we can as a city. And so I think that the other, different decisions could be made in the next year or two on this. But like we kind of talked about with the sanitary sewer line, there's just a ton of moving parts on this right now that are kind of getting worked out over the next year. And this is probably a really good discussion and we'll maybe have some action on it in next year's CIP, like, once we kind of get some clarity on more of these things.
It's also true that Irish Lane is due for a full reconstruction, which is, you know, that's a once in a 75-year sort of a deal?
We wish.
You need to be our road designer. We need.
I mean, well, what is the actual number? So we, you know, we we resurface it every, hopefully, no more than 35 years. How often do we do a full reconstruction on a road typically?
Oh, a full reconstruction? So we resurface every 30 to 35 years. Reconstruction is, we we consider reconstruction like if we take it from an urban to, or from a rural to an urban section. And that's just when conditions warrant that.
Okay, so we don't, like, every so often have to dig down all the way through the base and reset things?
No, we'll proof roll, make sure the base is good, and then we'll repay.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Can I just ask, while we have you here, like, and just to state it, can you talk a little bit about like why certain roads get more attention more regularly than others? For example, like, why has it taken so long for Irish Lane to have something done to it versus East Cheryl that has been done more recently in the past? And like, we get this question a lot.
Urban versus urban.
Say that again.
One is an urban area road and the other one is a rural one, isn't it, Colby?
Is it that simple as of an answer?
I'm not sure the question is clear. I saw, I think I saw the email that you were referring to, that there was a resident commenting the fact that Sine and Lacy, or I'm sorry, Cheryl and Sine was, has been done like three times in the last whatever short period of time. And I don't know if that's really tied to the fact that the Sine Road Reconstruction Project has been multiple years with multiple phases. And there's a feeling that perhaps because the phases intersected near that location, that more work is being done there than actually has been done. But it's only been reconstructed once, and that was in the last couple of years.
Gotcha.
So I don't, I guess it's not clear to me what that, what, what, I guess, what that question from or statement from the resident was.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, and Logan probably has gotten these questions too. Like, we just get asked like why certain roads get more attention. And like, I mean, it's phrased that way, but I'm assuming they mean if a road is in a certain condition, what condition causes or prompts more immediate action than others?
And there's a lot of, there's a lot of factors into that. It can be the the traffic, volume of traffic on the roadway. It can be also adjacent construction. So like the portion of Lacy Road from Fish Hatchery West to Seminole is in bad shape. However, this year, we're under reconstruction on Sine, so we didn't want to shut that east-west down. Next year, we're under construction on Fitch Rona, so we don't want to shut that down. So, you know, we're pushing that. We probably would have redone that a year or two ago. However, because of these projects going on, we're now pushing that. Irish, I believe, was pushed, just the bike lanes have kind of, you know, the the city had money to resurface just the roadway. However, we haven't had money to do the bike lane. So it was, hey, let's go get a grant. Grant's great, it slows up a project. And you can see how it's slowing up to get that money. And now kind of what we're running up against is a deteriorating road while waiting for funding for for the bike lanes. So there's a lot of different factors that come into play.
Yeah, and to kind of continue that conversation, I think we've had very similar conversations about this, specifically kind of that Sine and Cheryl intersection. You know, one other thing that I think is important to note is that, you know, we kind of have had multiple waves of development. We had Swan Creek 20, 25 years ago. And then, you know, recently, we've had Uptown, we had the Quick Trip. You know, each of those apartment buildings is tens of millions of dollars worth of private investment with hundreds more residents. So to, Tim, to your point about, you know, the traffic volumes increasing, we also have that additional development that prompts some of that, that need to further expand or in the case of East Cheryl past Sine, extend the road as we built out Uptown and got some of the infrastructure in play there. And then also, I mean, there's a tax incremental district in that area as well. So that's, you know, the, any of the developments that happens there, that money has to stay within that general vicinity. So we, even if, you know, we had all this development in Uptown, we can't spend that money on Irish Lane because the TID doesn't get anywhere close to that. Am I correct in?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so I think we are ready to vote.
Yeah, I I just wanted to say that we had a big discussion about streets resurfacing back in February 2024 at Committee of the Hall. And we've been talking about doing that maybe in early 2026. So I think heads up, Tim. You and Russ are going to be on deck probably February, March 2025.
We'll be ready.
Yes.
Okay, so let's go to number six. Please, let's vote.
Alder Dancer Jr.
Aye.
Alder Gareherd.
Aye.
Alder Herps.
Aye.
Alder Jutser.
Aye.
Alder Lotisay.
Aye.
Alder Maldonado.
Aye.
Alder Reigstad.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, so Dave, number seven.
I was going to withdraw number seven.
Okay, but then, okay, but then I want to clarify that because I want to understand that. I think there is a misunderstanding that about this too. So can you explain, I know there is a memo there that explains also why we are doing that, Tracy? Can you explain?
Sure, so the next future well we have proposed to be closer to Kane Road on Irish Lane. And in order to to put a well there, we need a 12-inch transmission main to that well. So the the main would be installed down Irish. There are, there is some main on Irish, but it's it's smaller, it's a 10-inch main. We replaced some of the, we replaced the 10-inch main on Irish, and then there's gaps. So between Irish and the 10-inch main, I don't know, probably about 700 or so feet, we need to install main. And then beyond, I think it's West Hill, we need to also install main to Kane for the future well site. This well will replace well seven in the neighborhood. Eight, we're going to abandon with the, with all the reconfiguring we're doing with the construction of well 12 and the addition of Tower D. We're going to keep seven in the interim for, we don't want, you know, it's like an island out there. We want to make sure that the water, we don't want stagnant water down there. We want, you know, newer water, fresher water, so we're going to keep seven now. And then when the new well goes in in the Greenfield area, then we'll abandon seven as well.
What's your timing for that new well? Where do we have that new well?
I don't remember where I have it in the CIP, but it'll be pushed back. Because, you know, we're just, we had well number 12 in the CIP in 18, and we haven't needed it. We just, you know, until we, until we need it, we just keep pushing it back.
Thank you, Tracy.
Okay, so this one, any other question to clarify that? Okay, Logan.
Yeah, I just wanted to draw on one more point to Tracy that the three of us, Tim, Tracy, you and I kind of talked about recently as well, pun not intended there. But this project specifically is is not only development or like future-proofing us or allowing that capacity for development. The folks who live in the eastern edge of Pittsburgh, current residents, would see the benefits. I know we heard from from Patrick Chaney earlier about the the pipe that runs down under Sine right now that kind of is cut off from the rest of the system. So having that additional pressure and having that additional capacity, not pressure capacity, excuse me, would help with kind of that whole eastern Pittsburgh system and zone. And one example of a way that would help folks would be with firefighting capacity if there were needing, the fire department needed significant water to put out like a large house fire. Right now, we truck that water in, even though there are hydrants, because there isn't that capacity. So this would help folks who live in Greenfield currently. This would help folks who live kind of along that eastern side of the city with creating that zone with Tower D, right?
So this this well, well 13 is is what we're talking about that would be constructed in in the Greenfield area. The main is closed to the south system right now, and so it's still an isolated system with just two small wells. With the construction of well 12, which has been drilled and we put out to bid for the pump house and the construction of Tower D, we will abandon eight and connect that system to the main system. And then it will have the fire capacity that the fire department will be comfortable hooking up to those hydrants to to fight fires in that area. The well 13 will obviously help if it's on when there's a fire, if it's running. But the 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 biggest benefit will be when when Tower D and well 12 are done.
What, where is Tower D?
Tower D is at the northeast corner of the, of Highway 14 and Lacy Road.
Uptown.
Uptown.
Okay, any other question about this? Okay, so this one, amendment number seven was withdrawn, okay. Okay, so we don't need to vote. Thank you, vote for you. Okay, so number eight.
I'll move approval of amendment number eight, adding lighting to the Capital City Trail underpass at Longford Terrace.
Second motion.
All right, so this, the city has three underpasses, three trail underpasses. There's one on the Military Ridge Trail under Sprocket Drive. And there's one leading from Chapel Valley to Kinsale Drive under McKee Road. And then there's the one under, of the Cap City Trail under Longford Terrace, which is actually the longest one, the longest underpass in the city, and it's the only one that's not lit. So I wanted to bring lighting there. I brought this amendment forward and Misty informed me that this is not our jurisdiction. This would have to be Dane County doing this. But I wanted to leave this amendment in here just to bring it to everyone's attention. And I will go ahead and withdraw this amendment.
Okay, so maybe you need to talk to your Dane County supervisor so they can put it in the Dane County budget.
Yes, I have reached out to the supervisor for this area.
Okay, okay, so we are withdrawing this one, okay, okay. So next we move to number eight.
Nine.
Oh, nine, sorry.
I'll move approval of amendment number nine, CIP number 6266, New Park Developments add progressive learning area to Quarry Ridge.
Second.
Okay, what is this?
So this is a collaboration with Corp Trails, who does the maintenance at Quarry Ridge. By Trails, it would be to develop a, so they have designed what is a progressive learning area. It's basically four independent tracks of increasing difficulty, mound bike tracks with different levels of jumps. So you basically come around one start, you choose your path, and then you go through it and pick the path that you want. So this allows people to do training runs before they actually go out into the actual bike trails in Quarry Ridge and tackle the actual trails. Corp is doing fundraising for this as well. There is, so I've spoken with them. This would be kind of like a matching program. I know that if we contribute money to it as like a normal project, it kind of requires us to bid the project. They, Corp would like to do some of the work themselves or use like a contractor that they have used in the past. They are currently in the process of or are about to amend their agreement with their ability to do the maintenance in Quarry Ridge. I know they're meeting with Adam and Valerie to kind of like work through that process. So my hope is that as part of this, that process, they can kind of figure out how this would kind of work and how they would be able to kind of design the financing for this so that we can give them a little help.
Okay, I I have a question. Is this park a community park? Yes, okay, good, so it qualifies for park fee, okay. So what is the city portion? $80,000? This is what we're asking?
Well, we, the city portion will be $40,000, the project would be $80,000 with Corp contributing 40 as well if we were, if we were to bid it out ourselves.
What is this 3.9 million dollar?
Well, that's, it's just being added to the New Park Developments project. So that's the whole total of the New Park Development CIP item. That includes everything in New Park Developments.
I don't understand.
Misty, do you mind clarifying?
Yep, so the CIP project 6266 is how we account for the variety of different projects that use park fees. So the numbers you're looking at with the $3 million, that includes all of the different park fee funded projects. This amendment would just add an additional $80,000 project. $40,000 would come from another entity, whether it's Corp or donations or something. And then the other $40,000 would be park fees. So it's that section four, first five years, you can see the additional funding there that's being proposed.
Okay, oh, I get it now, okay. Who, Logan?
Sure, I'll just, yes, want to ask one clarifying question then. If the total cost of the progressive learning area is estimated at $60,000 to $80,000, and we're proposing a revision of adding $80,000, but yet there's that fundraising. I guess I'm just wondering why we didn't add $40,000 and anticipate that 50% will come from from that fundraising?
I believe that's due to the. I believe that's due to the, if we are required to bid the entire project ourselves. So at that point then, we are required to take ownership of the entire $80,000, and then we would receive the $40,000 from Corp as part of that. So it's just, we have to take ownership of the bidding. And I think they would prefer to structure this a little differently, but that's for them to work out with Adam and Valerie if they're able to, so.
Okay. Who has other questions?
If you read a little further, there's the table with the first five years, and it's got the $40,000 in park fees and $40,000 in contributions from others. So I think that's, as Alder Ladisay explained. I wanted to ask another clarifying question. The first line of the description says, or this, I'm sorry, the second sentence, it says the current $170,000 allocated for the parking lot expansion will remain unchanged. But it's only $130,000, right? There's an additional $40,000 for a different project in the same year, but the parking lot itself is only 130.
I thought it was all, I thought that was 170.
Alder Jetser is correct. So yeah, sorry, I missed that. The parking lot itself is 130, and then there's a lien to at the splash pad for 40,000 to make up the total for 2026. Sorry, Alder.
No, that's my fault.
Okay, any other question?
First, I think this is cool. Mountain biking sounds terrifying, and people should practice before they go on mountain bike trails. So I think it's a good idea. What is Corp? I'm not familiar with.
They are a like mountain biking advocacy organization. So they currently do, I think, the majority of the maintenance at Quarry Ridge.
Very good.
Yeah. And the upkeep of the trails and stuff.
I believe Corp stands for Capital Offroad Pathfinders.
Oh, cool.
And I, I mean, I learned as part of this that Quarry Ridge is, I mean, there are people that drive hours to come to there to mountain bike. So it's a, like a destination for, in the mountain biking community, of which I am also not a part of, and would need to do training runs if I were to be.
The other thing that I found out is that this is one of the only park in Dane County that we don't charge a fee.
That's my, I'm for this, but like the Middleton, they have a biking team. They come and they train there. And we're asking, you know.
We should change that.
120, 120,000 for the parking and 40, you know, 100.
Hey, we can, you can do during the budget amendment, you can, they can add a fee, isn't it? We can add a fee.
You can always add fees. Of course, the administrative, how do you collect the fee and all of that stuff becomes an issue.
Like the reservation for the pickable court. Who knows?
I'll take that up in the parks, but I think you know where it's coming from. You know, 80% of our residents don't ride bikes, and people are coming from all over. It's not fair that our, our residents have to, you know, bear the cost. We have a great organization that's working there. I'm very thankful there in Pittsburgh, and it helps our, it's a nice amenity, but I think a fee would, fee would be maybe appropriate. You know, you have to go to ski at Elver Park. They maintain those trails, and you know, and spend money, you have to, you have to get a pass to.
Or you need to bike on the Dane County trail, and you need to pay for that.
Like disc golf would be a, like similar in that vein, like you have to pay a fee to disc golf or buy.
I'll take that up at parks.
Okay, okay.
As an action item.
Okay, good. Okay. Any other comments or questions? So we are ready to vote. Number nine.
Alder Dancer Jr.
Aye.
Alder Gerhert.
Aye.
Alder Herps.
Aye.
Alder Jetser.
Aye.
Alder Ladisay.
Aye.
Alder Maldonado.
Aye.
Alder Reigstad.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Okay, number 10. Who is this one?
I'll move approval of amendment number 10 to CIP project 6266, New Park Developments to add bike parking to Quarry Ridge Parking Lot Expansion Project.
Second.
Okay, so this is, I've often been perplexed why the bike park doesn't have any bike parking. So I am proposing that we add, and this is a heck of a deal here, we can get 10 bike parking spaces for the cost of about one of those new 30 parking, car parking spaces. If we add about, should be less than $5,000, we can put a concrete pad next to the restroom and shelter area with five inverted U racks and get 10 bikes, you know, parking for 10 bikes there.
Okay. Any question, comment? It seems reasonable. Okay. Okay.
I promise. I very much promise it's short. I was just, I was trying to think of why this project would be needed, because if people are biking to this facility, they would be using their bikes theoretically to then ride through the new PLA. And then I thought, well, what if it's a, you know, a parent riding with a kid and, you know, the kid's doing it and the parents watching, watching them go through this trail? So I think there is a, there is a justification and a use. So I was just trying to kind of grapple with that in my head, and that's one use case I came up with for why this could be a benefit.
I've, I've wanted bike parking here for my own use for quite a while because, you know, I do a lot of running, and sometimes I like to change up where my starting point is. So I would like to bike here, park, and then I can, I can do a long run starting from that area rather than running from my house all the way out to here where, you know, it's almost time to turn around. We've also got an awful lot of people who do the Ironman, right? And, and so, you know, popular workout with people who do triathlons is what they call a brick workout, where you, you ride your bike rather hard, and then you get off and you immediately do a run. Well, this would be a convenient place to drop your bike, and then you can run on the Military Ridge State Trail.
Okay, I never thought about that, but, okay. Any other question, comment? Okay, we are going to vote.
Alder Dancer Jr.
Aye.
Alder Gerhert.
Aye.
Alder Herps.
Aye.
Alder Jetser.
Aye.
Alder Ladisay.
Aye.
Alder Maldonado.
Aye.
Alder Reigstad.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Number 11.
I move approval amendment 11, CIP 6275 Northwest Teen Center Remove Project.
I'll second for the purpose of discussion.
Everyone saw my article in the Star. I received many comments. I did have one Alder tell me I'm a disappointment for publishing it. But I've lived there. We need a community center, not a teen center. People say the teens have to have their own place. The example I would give you when I was growing up, I lived in the country, as I got into high school, you know, my friends had cars. And I said, asked my dad, well, could I get a car so I don't have to ride my three, ride three miles to practice? And he said, I'll get you a car, but you're going to have to get a job to pay for it. You won't be able to play sports. The point I'm making is, oh, we have to have a place of their own. You don't, you don't get everything you want in life. I think we can give them something that would work well for them and benefit the whole center. There's many assets between the church there, the Boys and Girls Center, future things coming. I think we need a better plan that is more responsible. You saw the note from Jason, the teacher in Oregon, their teen center is vastly underused. And I, I think we can come up with a better plan that costs, costs less. Some of you have mentioned, oh, kids will be coming from the other side of town to this on buses. That's not happening. They don't really move back and forth between where Joe lives and where I live. And so I think, I think we come up with a, a different, different plan. We, you know, we, we heard from the teens, you know, the, this and that. Well, I, you know, I had a, I had a great uncle, he was 18 when he went ashore at Omaha Beach on D-Day. And there were 17 and 18-year-olds that, you know, were lying there with their arms shot off. Generation later, if you don't go to college, you were stuck in the jungles of Vietnam. We had, after 9/11, many young men and women signed up, you know, to, to serve. And even now you look, we have, have young, young men and women that are undocumented that joined the military to become citizens. I, you know, many of the, many of the things that the teens expressed, I, they didn't, they didn't get that much traction with me. I realize mental health is an issue. That's, that's addressed in school. The governor put money for mental health, you know, in, in the school budget district. We're not going, the city is not going to be funding a mental health professional at this. Kids want a place to hang out. We can give them that. We can have things on Friday nights, disc jockeys, you know, DJs. I mean, there, there's things we can do to help the teens for a fraction of this cost. And let's, let's, you know, they voted down, the residents voted down, you know, 53 to 47, wanted to increase the levy, you know, please, please take the, take the heart what they told you at the last time you asked them. That's all.
Okay, so I want to mention something because you, you say that maybe we can do a, you know, instead of a teen center, we can do like a community center, something like that. If we do that, we also will need a capital to do that. So I don't think it's prudent to, you know, to remove the funding if, you know.
We can lease space. We can lease space.
At least leasing is operational cost too, we would need.
We could partner with the Boys and Girls Club. The place sits empty. Every Friday night, it's empty, you know, good God. Friday and Saturday night, that's where teens need a place. There's many options, Madam Mayor. I don't mean to discount what you're saying, but I, I think we could, I think for a reasonable price, we could accomplish this mission for many more than just the teens in my neighborhood.
Okay, Gabriel.
Quick, we've had a lot of discussion about the teen center. I think it needs more time. There's a lot of things happening behind the scenes, and not all the questions are answered yet, but it's a project that continues to deserve the time to move forward. I also sometimes think, think about, you know, what if we were, what if the senior center didn't exist and we wanted to build a senior center? What kind of opposition would that have nowadays? You know what I mean? I think about things like that, where the senior center has an equivalent, you know, specific subset of the population that it serves, and that it's very much a social services organization, but it's here, and it's beloved, and people support it. But if it were not here and we were trying to create it like this was being created, I bet you would see the same type of opposition. A new idea is really hard to figure out. It needs time. So I support keeping it in the, in the CIP and let the project continue to move forward as it has been.
Joe.
I'll also add, because I, I did get an email, and I think the other council members did, about the idea of the city kind of providing staffing and those types of costs. And I think it was made pretty clear in the, the study that the city wouldn't, doesn't have an intention to take on that role. And I, I think I'll also point out and emphasize the fact that you had the director of one of the most successful nonprofits in Dane County get on the screen and say that she is willing to have her organization operate youth programming. And that would be central espando. And, and a lot of nonprofit leaders don't, wouldn't take that type of a risk without like running it by their board first. So for, for an organization like that to make that commitment, along with the investment we've had from, you know, the county in this project, and again, the investment that's happened over the past five years from young people speaks to the fact that there is merit to this project. Again, it's, it's in the capital improvement plan. I think the mayor said it pretty clearly after the presentation last November, that operational funds need to occur in order for the project to move forward. We're not in a budget cycle right now. This is a CIP. And for the past five years, every single council has approved, has agreed, at first not unanimously, but eventually unanimously to be able to move this project forward. So, you know, I, I would say to remove it from the CIP would be, force us to start from scratch. I also think it's disingenuous to put forward the notion of renting out a space without putting a budget amendment or a CIP amendment to include those costs of what we would pay annually to be able to rent out a space. I, I think I've heard so many people use the teen center as a excuse for everything that's wrong with our city budgetarily, when we haven't even put more than $100,000 into it in the past five years. It's kind of ridiculous. It's also hypocritical. The amendment did not include funding, the referendum that we put forward did not include anything related to the teen center, but yet consistently, people blamed it over and over and over and over again for all of our problems. We haven't spent hardly anything on this project so far, and the fact that it continually gets used as the tool for everything that's wrong with our city budgetarily is ridiculous to me. I just want to say that after five years on the council, I'm done being polite about this. I think there's a ton of hypocrisy, especially from people who consistently, consistently ask for $50 million for a police facility, complaining about a fiscal impact of something that hasn't even been built yet and that we haven't even spent the money on yet and wouldn't even come close to the fraction of the difference between a shooting range and no shooting range. So that's, that's, that's my commentary on the matter.
Oh, we are close to 10?
I move to extend the meeting by 30 minutes.
Second.
All those in favor of extending the meeting by 30 minutes, say aye.
Aye.
And the motion carried. So the other, the other thing I was thinking about, if we, if the council reject, approve this amendment, we need to return the million dollars to Dane County, isn't it?
We haven't actually received the money.
Well, but we had to tell them no, and then the next time that we go there to ask for money, they're going to say, you know, "Fitzburg, we already gave you money, you just return it. We don't trust you." This is how we see it. Okay, any other comments about this project?
I just had, I've lived there 37 years. I know the neighborhood, know the kids. I, you know, I, I think I have the best pulse on this, and, and we could accomplish, accomplish, you know, I, this is Alder Maldonado's vision, you know, we can accomplish his vision much more reasonably and help, help the overall community with a different, different plan. That's all.
Who's next? Dave? Okay.
Yeah, just one addition to Alder Maldonado's testimony. It is interesting to me that people are sometimes, you know, dead set against something that is going to help nurture the youth, the future of the city and the country. I think there is no better return on investment than education and support of, of our youth.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so we are going to vote.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Dancer Jr.
Nay.
Alder Gerhert.
Nay.
Alder Herps.
Aye.
Alder Jetser.
Nay.
Alder Ladisay.
Nay.
Alder Maldonado.
Nay.
Alder Reigstad.
Nay.
Motion failed.
Thank you. Number 12, the last one.
Yeah, I move approval of amendment number 12, new refuse and recycling equipment, specifically leaf vacuum trucks.
Second.
So this is something that was discussed pretty extensively in RCC last year. I included a memo from Ben Schulte, our environmental engineer, from February 7 of 2024, but which he revised and updated for this. This is how a lot of municipalities deal with, with leaf pickup. They have a truck that literally sucks it like a vacuum, which sounds kind of fun to see, but we've never, we've, we have not had that, I think, ever in, in Pittsburgh City's history. But what we do right now is Pelletary, our waste, our, you know, garbage and recycling provider, does this for us. They don't do it for anyone else. But they basically, people, I, people know, they put the bag out, the open bag, the people will come out, they'll dump the bag into the truck, they'll leave the bag behind. So it creates a ton of waste. It's not very efficient. Pelletary has already expressed they do not like when their, when their employees have to get out of the truck for any reason, because that's when you introduce the possibility of somebody getting injured. So they don't love this, but they do it because we're a big contract and they, we ask them to, because this is what we've done for years. So I see a couple of things. Number one, considering this is potentially a better cost option, you know, I don't know. We'd have to take a look at that when we do a next contract with Pelletary. But then also, we, we might face a time, the next contract, that Pelletary is like, we're not going to do, we're not going to do this anymore. I think there's a possibility of that as well. So I think we need to prepare for that possibility and have this in the CIP as a potential. I put it in twenty thirty-two, so it's in the back five years, so we have some time to figure it out. But I just think it's, it's within the realm of possibility that we would need to do it. For anyone, I got tons of questions about this. Why would you spend this money on, on new trucks? Just for clarification, this isn't the refuse and recycling budget. This comes from the recycling and refuse fees that people pay. It is not from property tax levy. It is its own separate budget. Thanks.
I have a question. This is very interesting. Yeah, and I receive a lot of question from neighbor about why we don't, they do the same thing in Madison, but how much do we pay to Pelletary for this service?
I, I don't know the, do you have the?
It's in the memo here. Looks like we are paying about a hundred and twenty thousand this year and we're going to just under a hundred and twenty-nine thousand in twenty twenty-six.
Okay, so if I am looking at the math, there's a big gap.
Yeah, but the truck is a one-time expense.
Yeah, but you need to replace it and with a replacement fund, my favorite, you know, and, and stuff. I don't know. I am looking at, you know, that.
And I, I wouldn't propose doing it next year, but I, I just, I believe that there could come a time when Pelletary says no, says we're not doing it anymore. I, I just, I foresee that, especially when they talk about how they, we got rid of the old unlimited recycling.
Yeah.
Program, specifically because when their people had to, they had to physically get out of the car to grab the extra recycling and put it in the car. And they're like, we don't, we don't want to do that anymore. So I, I don't know. They haven't said this to me directly, but like, I just feel like we have to prepare for the potential eventuality that we have to spend more money on this program if we want to continue doing leaf pickup, which I think people consider a necessity and would consider a huge cut in service if we didn't continue to do it. So I do think it possibly is more expensive, but it might become a necessity.
You know what I do in my house with, in my house with the leaves? We mow it then. You know, so.
I think Micah wants to say something.
Okay, Micah.
I was, to, you know, who brought cookies? Let me see, thank you. You know, if you said, all right, we're doing this tomorrow, we don't, you know, our, our staff in the bus, in the fall, they're, they're the street sweeper, you know, I don't, I don't think we have the existing capacity with the amount of workers we have. Chad, maybe you can weigh in, or Tim is here, is here.
I don't think we, we do to run, you know, to run that vacuum, vacuum truck. I, I believe it's at least a two-person operation and that's.
I think that's accurate, Dave.
Thank you for the cookies.
I was going to.
Okay. Yeah, you can go and then Tim.
No, go.
Yeah, in the memo, I believe there was kind of Ben had looked out, included a table with adjacent communities on the vac truck, I believe. I think it was on page one or two of the memo, just how many people it takes to operate, whether you get a vac truck or the trailer.
Ooh, we will need like two vacuum truck, one employee per truck.
Yeah, and it, well, yeah, so if we get a truck, then it's one employee. If you get a trailer, then you need somebody to drive the truck and somebody to operate the hose.
Correct.
So it's two employees.
I believe we, we need at least a minimum of two, if not three, to, to keep up.
You're not without, stuff gets sucked up into them, that, that happens all the time, you know.
Yeah, we.
It's just leaves, but something gets stuck and then the, then the van.
Yeah, Ben had, I believe, taken a, a survey also, and part of those results was with the hose, stuff gets sucked up and a lot of issues happen with the hose where the vac truck especially would be down for a significant amount of time. So then you're, if you're out a truck, do you have a replacement? If you don't have a replacement, you're using maybe a Bobcat or some other type of equipment with dump trucks to try to, to do this.
I appreciate your forethought, you know, on, on what, what could happen, but same talking, I think if they said, no, we don't want to do it anymore, I think we have other vendors that maybe want our work, that maybe would. I, I understand where you're coming from, Gabriella.
And I mean, if the council's more comfortable pushing it back, I put it in twenty thirty-two just to throw it out there, but we could push it back even farther to make it. But I, I do think it's important to include it because it's a topic we've discussed. I, I don't know if Ben wants to add anything. I'm sorry, Micah interrupted you.
No, I think everything that's been said is accurate, but if there's any other specific questions, I'm happy to answer them. I was a beneficiary of this when I lived in Madison. Like, I lived in a house with, like, if I were, were going to mulch the leaves in my yard, I would have had to mow like every single day. I mean, and we have some neighborhoods that have extremely large tree cannibies, like, and.
I have twenty-three.
This is, I think, an absolutely perfect, like, back five of the CIP project. It puts it on our radar. It is there, like, I just mentioned this to my neighbor who has like three giant ash trees in his yard and he was so happy because he, like, has five hundred Menards bags sitting out on his front lawn every single fall. And so, I mean, like, I, I understand that this needs to be flushed out and that we have to account for the actual capital cost, we have to account for how, what the actual operating cost of this would look like and what it, how it compares to what we're paying Pelletary, but that's, again, we're not asking to do this next year or anything like that, so. I think this would be well, well-received from a lot of residents in terms of just a nice feature to have in city.
Or maybe we charge them the actual cost.
Can I ask, can I ask a clarifying question, Ben, on your memo? Is that all right, Mayor?
No.
Ben, if this is placed in the, in the CIP for the back five, for instance, I do think based on what Tim had to say about the number of trucks that would be necessary, I think it would be important to increase that number to three. That way we would have some measure of backup if we do have an issue, since it seems as though that is a likely occurrence. And just the sheer geograph, geographical size of the city is, is going to be a bit more of a challenge unique to Pittsburgh than it might be of the other municipalities. And then more specifically, the question I have, another question I have is, you'd mentioned the cost associated with an employee at, you know, approximately a ten-week period. I'm going to guess that we don't have capacity within our existing highway maintenance, parks, maintenance crews to take this work on. So effectively, I'm assuming we're going to need to hire.
Seasonal.
Well, I don't know if seasonal would even be an option. That's where I'm kind of trying to, to get to here on this. And it's only a ten-week period, so I don't know who's looking for work for just a ten-week period in the fall when the teenagers would be back in school, high school and, and college. So I think if, if we're going to spend time on this, if the council moves it forward, I think we're going to need to factor that cost into the operational side as well of how we're going to actually broach this and how much could be potentially the cost being borne by refuse and recycling fees. And if that is the case, I think it would also be helpful with the common council and the community to understand what does that mean for the cost of those fees as far as an increase to allow this. I think Alder Gerhart, I don't want to get too, too much from a staff perspective into, into, into this, but I, I do think it's something we do need to look at. I think if there's value in looking at it, because I'm not sure, to her point, how much longer Pelletary is interested in providing the service and, you know, I don't know if there truly are others who, who would be, you know, but I think we got to make sure that we have a full picture of what the cost would be in order to provide the service at a level that our community probably would expect it to be provided at. And I don't know as though we're quite there yet. I do appreciate the work that you've put into it so far. I think you've got an excellent summary prepared. I think just some refinement may be necessary over the course of time if this is included in the CIP.
Are these single-purpose trucks? Would they be, like, would we have to find space to park these and they would sit idle for nine and a half months every year?
Can we lease those equipment? That one could be another.
Yeah. Yeah, well, and, and that's always kind of the thought, is you, you could lease them out or rent them out, but everyone needs them at the same time. So I, I, I don't know how well that's worked out for other communities that have, have tried that, but yeah, I mean, they're kind of a, a single-purpose piece of equipment.
Can we outsourced with the city of Madison? I don't know. I don't know. I, I am trying to, I think it's a good idea, but I am looking at the numbers and we are buying equipment that we are going to use, very expensive equipment that we are going to use only for three months. And we need to, the operational cost, replacement fund, the repair for that equipment and the storage of the equipment. So, so that one is, there is a huge gap here, so I want to, you know.
I mean, I one hundred percent agree with all of the concerns. Like, I, I like agree that this is like not an easy thing to figure out. I just think that we've had a full discussion about it in RCC and I don't think it's reflected in any official city document. And I think that's pretty bad practice to not like, Ben did a ton of research on this. And if we ever want to explore it, like, why isn't it sitting in the CIP document somewhere?
No, no, it's fine.
You know, I, I just feel like it has to be in there. And if you, we want to push it back to twenty thirty-five to be like, this is a faraway thing, like, that's fine by me. But I, I do think it, we should have it in there because it's something that we've already started to vet.
Yeah.
And it just, it should be in the, in the conversation. But I agree.
No, I think the other thing is, oh, I forgot what I was planning to say. I, I, you know, I agree that maybe we should have that, but we need to explore this and then, I forgot what I was planning to say. Thank you, Gabriel.
Shorter comments.
Can I ask, I know Madison also does the, uses the Bobcat to push the leaf pile into like a garbage truck or a dump truck or something to that effect. Is that, that's also something that I guess could be explored. That still allows the neighbors to do just the leaf pile in the, the front of their yard, which I think is like the main benefit to the neighbors, that you're not just filling bags and there's no waste and stuff like that. So that, maybe that's something that could be.
Maybe we can come, yeah.
Garbage trucks, though, Madison, has, has their, has their own, so it's not a.
No, the other thing that I think, this, I came back, that I didn't know that Pelletary was doing that, this service to us like a favor, you know what I mean? Like, they don't do that. And that one is something that maybe in the memo, we need to include that.
Yeah. Correct me if I'm wrong, Ben, I think they only do that for our city, right?
Um.
I recall that.
You know, I think between brush and yard waste, there, there might be, they might do brush for Sun Prairie. Yeah, it's a, it's, it's a short list.
Okay, well, yeah. So if, yeah, it's a, yeah. If eventually this service is gonna, you know, disappear, you know what I mean? I think we need to have a conversation what to do.
Ben, one last question, if I may. In the memo, it mentions the city of Sun Prairie was looking at this in twenty twenty-one. I noticed that they're not listed in the table. Can you explain or identify whether or not Sun Prairie has implemented this service or are they still kind of in the same situation we are in examining it?
Um, well, I guess I don't know as of this current time, but when I looked, they also kind of prepared a memo. You know, their recommendation at the time was, was to hold off and kind of explore down the line. I, I don't believe they're currently offering the, this service, I think as of twenty twenty-four, but that could have changed in the last year.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are ready to vote.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Dancer Jr.
Aye.
Alder Gerhart.
Aye.
Alder Herbs.
Nay.
Alder Jetzer.
Aye.
Alder Latice.
Aye.
Alder Maldonado.
Aye.
Alder Reigstad.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you very much. So we are at the end. Misty?
So we still need to actually approve the resolution itself that adopts the CIP as amended with these votes that we just took.
Okay, so who is going to introduce the?
That's on the table, right?
Ah, it's on the table? Who seconded this?
Dancer.
Okay, so all of us in favor of the resolution.
Roll call.
Oh, 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 shit, sorry. Okay.
Okay, so this is on the main motion?
Yeah.
As amended.
Yeah.
Alder Dancer Jr.
Aye.
Alder Gerhart.
Aye.
Alder Herbs.
Nay.
Alder Jetzer.
Aye.
Alder Latice.
Aye.
Alder Maldonado.
Aye.
Alder Reigstad.
Aye.
Motion carried, six one.
Okay, so thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
That's it?
For CIP, that's it. Now on to budget.
Okay.
That's worth.
Thank you very much, people. We have our CIP approved. Okay, so now we're going through, we have fifteen-minute Alder reports. I will start with number one.
I have nothing.
Okay.
No report.
Okay.
I'll just report that this morning at seven o'clock, I went out to McKee Farms Park to see what the rain situation was like and some of the park benches were submerged all the way up so that you could only see the top slat. It was thigh-deep water on the trails through McKee Farms Park. And then at like nine-thirty or ten o'clock, my wife went through there and it was nearly all drained.
Wow, we have a good system.
The system works, yeah.
Spot in the city.
Yeah. And the, you know, the city parks are, are supposed to serve that function.
Yes.
It's, it's better that the park gets flooded than everybody's basements. And I will do one little education moment here, Vision Zero related. There was a discussion at the Bike and Ped Commission about parking protected bike lanes and that got me to remembering the Dutch Reach is what it's called. If you're in your car and you're parked on the side of the road and you're, and you're going to get out of your car, open the car door by reaching your arm across your body. That will force you to look backwards and make sure there's nobody approaching from behind, whether you're on the driver's side or the passenger's side. Use the wrong hand to open your door and that way you can prevent tragedy.
Okay, thank you.
Couple of things from me. When we were voting on the vehicle registration fee, I offered to anybody listening to meet with them about the budget. And so one of the residents took me up on that and we had a really nice conversation. So I want to thank, he knows, I don't want to name him, but he knows who he is. Thank you so much for meeting with me. I thought it was great. It was a tough conversation because he was very suspicious of the vehicle registration fee and, but it was really great to kind of talk him through how these documents work, where they live, how to navigate them so that he can review them on his own and come up with more questions, because he definitely wants to engage with the material, as I'm sure a lot of people do. It's just not that easy to do. And you have to watch a ton of meetings before you might even learn how to use the document. So I thought it was a great conversation and, you know, wish I could have more one of the, one, with those one-on-one conversations. So anyway, if anyone else in the city wants to meet to talk about the budget, I would love to do it. I think it's super interesting and I'd be happy to help you, walk you through it, but then also help you learn how to do it yourself so that you can ask the questions and feel like you, you know the, get the information that you want. Reminders, the housing survey is open to, till August twenty-second. There's also housing forums on August fourteenth. They're going to be at Oasis Cafe from eight-thirty to ten AM, McKee Farms Park near the splash pad from ten-thirty to twelve, and Southdale Park from five to seven PM as part of the End of Summer Resource Fair. Forestry Survey is also open only in, for the three more days, so if you haven't taken the tree survey, it's pretty quick. I would take that as well. Community Night Out is tomorrow night, five to eight PM at McKee Farms Park. And the Agora Art Fair is this weekend, August sixteenth, should be pretty fun. Ifact TV did a really cool preview of the event, in case anyone saw that. Yeah, oh, volunteer volunteers, and then Constance of the McKee on the eighteenth of August. And also I saw the note that there are four new bicycle stations around town at Hugel James Town, State Bridge Suites in Madison, Pittsburgh, McKee Farms Park South and the Rusty Bee. Thanks.
Thank you. Logan.
All right. Alder Latice and I went out with Joyce from our Economic Development Department and toured some of our efficiency navigator recipients over the, from recent waves to kind of get a sense of what that project has looked like visually and see some of the impacts and some of the needs that still exist. Also want to thank the folks who wrote in for all of the CIP-related items. Have had several folks from District Three and from outside District Three as well reach out with questions, comments that I really appreciate. It's a lot easier to make informed decisions as a council member when we hear from folks rather than kind of, we hear no, but we don't often hear what no but looks like. So I appreciate hearing specifics of what we'd rather have instead to make informed decisions. On that same subject, also had the opportunity to meet with some folks in District Three in Greenfield yesterday evening for probably an hour and a half or so, which was certainly very informative and enlightening to both the items that we discussed earlier this evening and other traffic calming items and other steps we can maybe take to make some improvements that are both short-term and long-term. We also installed a four-way stop at Irish and Sine recently and have heard a lot of great feedback about that, so a reminder that that is now an always-stop, everybody, drivers, bicyclists, et cetera. And then just a quick reminder that on Thursday, August 14, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., we have the End of Summer Resource Fair at Southdale Park.
Okay, thank you very much.
No, I just want to say thank you to the residents who reached out around the CIP amendments, and I'm willing to invite folks out to, or your Alder, myself, and others to their homes to discuss things and have critical conversations. I hope we can continue that engagement and increase it. And then just a major shout-out to Jill and her team over at the Senior Center, providing some very expeditious assistance with some matters, so just appreciate continuing to build those relationships and use those lifelines throughout the city.
Thank you.
Okay, on August 2nd, I had a meeting in Greenfield Park with the Greenfield neighborhood. I'd say probably around 20 people showed up, so it was really good turnout. We had a really good conversation. We talked about many of the things that we talked about tonight. I know that Alder Herps withdrew those two amendments, but I appreciate him bringing them because it led to a good conversation, and I hope that those people are watching and can hear that and that we can continue to have those conversations. August 25, I think, is going to be the Stoner Prairie Park ribbon cutting, if I am correct.
Yes.
I don't think we have a time yet, but I believe that's going to be the date.
Yes, we have a ribbon cutting.
It's prior to the next council meeting.
Yes, you're right.
I'll just emphasize the tree survey again, and then finally, most of you probably know this, but Stoneman's and O'Brien's Sweet Corn are both open. They are Fitchburg institutions, so everyone should go there and patronize those two locations.
No, it's the.
Quick follow-up on that while we wait. Is it the same type of corn as, for the folks who are more experienced here, what's, is, do we want to try both and have a competition, you know, or at least to kind of get the sense of which we like, which we prefer?
It's very much a yes-and sort of a situation.
Yes, yes. I don't want to pit two of our longstanding families against each other. Hatfields and McCoys.
For what? What are you talking about?
The sweet corn.
Yes.
What is that?
If it's, yeah. Curious if it's different.
It's different varieties. I think Stoneman has their own variety, I think, or, I mean, people refer to it as Stoneman's, so I'm assuming that they have, over the generations, bred their own.
I don't have it.
But I can tell you from firsthand experience, there's no, you don't even need to throw it in a pot of water or put butter or salt on it. You can eat these things raw and they're delicious.
Yeah, is, sorry, is August 25 at 3 o'clock for the ribbon cutting for the?
Thank you.
Stoner Prairie. And then on August 26, Adam sent you an email, we are doing a tour in the hub at 9:30. So all of you are welcome and invited, so, okay?
If you are planning, sorry to interrupt, if you are planning to attend, please let Tracy know so that we can properly notice a potential quorum as well.
And the other thing that I learned when you go to a construction site, you cannot wear any shoe that are open. So, you know what I mean? No sandals, no flip-flop. Okay. Okay, so, thank you. Announcement, next common council meeting will be August 26, and our next committee of the whole is the 27, and I don't know what are the topics?
We're not certain yet, but we'll talk about EMS probably for sure.
Oh, EMS.
We're still figuring it out.
Okay, okay. I need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All those in favor of adjournment, say aye. And you pose, we are adjourned at 10:24. Buenas noches.